Do we have a quorum? Okay, I hereby. I hereby call the Police Oversight Commission to order on Thursday, September 11th, 2025, at 5:03 PM. This meeting is taking place in person, with in-person attendance and by teleconference via Zoom. The public may access the meeting via Santa Ana YouTube channel or the city's website. Please bear with us as the technology may disrupt the flow of the meeting. Madam Secretary, please conduct roll call.
Commissioner Garanski. Commissioner Mejia?
Here.
Commissioner Pereira?
Here.
Commissioner Said?
Here, thank you.
Commissioner Vega?
Present.
Vice Chair Castillo Lawton?
Here.
Chair Carpenter?
Here.
Records shows we have seven members present, and Chair Carpenter, you have a quorum.
Okay, next on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. If able, will you please join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance? Okay, our next item is Public Comments Section. Next, we have the Public Comments Section. This is a time for the commission to receive comments from the public. We will not accept any additional requests for speaker cards once we begin the public comments session. If you have not already, please submit your requests to the recording secretaries. Speakers will have three minutes to speak. Madam Secretary, do we have any public speakers?
Yes. So for members of the public on Zoom or teleconference to request to speak during public comments on agenda or non-agenda items within the city's jurisdiction, you must dial *9 from your phone or click the button labeled Raise Hand for Zoom Now to be in the speaker queue once public comments commence. We will now hear from the members of the public that are physically present in the council chamber, followed by those on the conference call or Zoom to provide their comments on agenda or non-agenda items. Please state your name and the ward or neighborhood that you reside in for the record. Right now, we have a total of five speakers in person. And the first speaker is. David Pulido.
Hey, good evening, everyone. My name is David Pulido. I'm a member of CSO Orange County's Police Accountability Committee. I live here in Ward Five. I'm here, you know, in the context of years, I think, of the city dragging its feet on this commission. Now it's been properly staffed. However, you know, we've also heard claims that it does not align with state law, you know, in its current powers. So I'm here to urge you to defend the commission's powers and your input, including the director's ability to conduct independent investigations, subpoena witnesses, compel evidence. I urge you to request, if necessary, time for the city to consider other legal counsel. Because for us, restricting the commission to the review of investigations by the Department of Internal Affairs is not acceptable. And the reason for that is because historically, it stood in the way of accountability. The year this commission was founded, we saw police kill 73-year-old unarmed Miguel Chavez in a CVS parking lot. He was shot twice with 40-millimeter rounds and viciously mauled by a police dog. He died later from his wounds. We saw the police torture and kill an unarmed man named Luis Amesqua at La Quinta Inn. He was delirious and confused when officers tased and hogtied him, and he suffered heart attacks and died. These officers were not found guilty for criminal wrongdoing, and most of them still work in SAPD as of last year. Again, last year, we saw officers Luis Casillas and Isaac Ibarra kill Noe Rodriguez. And you've heard testimony from his wife, Erica Menta, at the last meeting. He was experiencing a mental health crisis when officers confronted him, shouted three identical English commands, and shot at him almost 30 times. They later made false statements about what he was doing before the shooting and also about the amount of bullets that they fired. But these officers still work in the department. One of the officers, Luis Casillas, killed again just one month later. That was Henry Gonzalez Jr. And in June, he was involved in the brutal beating of a 15-year-old named Mario Diaz. The city now faces two lawsuits as a result of the killing of Noe Rodriguez, one for negligence and assault and one for civil rights violations. Every day that justice is delayed for Noe's family and the victims of these officers, justice is denied, in our view. So we don't have faith in the department's ability to investigate the police killing and hold these officers accountable because the history just shared with you. And that is why we believe that an immediate, independent investigation by this commission, a fully empowered commission, is necessary and that the involved officers be recommended to be fired. I appreciate the interest that you have shown in this case and your time, and I'd be happy to share any materials with you. I couldn't find your personal contacts or city contacts, so if there's any way I can share that with you, I'd be happy to share the materials that I have. But thank you very much.
The next speaker is Abraham Q.
Good evening, commissioners and city staff. My name is Abe. I'm a member of community service organization, Orange County. I also live in Ward Three. I'm here to continue demanding justice for Noe Rodriguez, as previously mentioned, including conducting an independent investigation of the officers Luis Casillas and Isaac Ibarra, who shot Noe almost 30 times while he was unarmed in downtown Santa Ana. I'm also here to speak for other residents of Santa Ana who I've gotten to know through the work that CSO does in the community here. The average working person in Santa Ana has no idea that we have a police oversight commission. Most people don't know how to submit a complaint about the police department, or they fear retaliation. And many have no confidence in calling police when they do experience a real emergency. This commission, as mentioned, was made after the National George Floyd rebellions to increase public confidence and improve transparency in Santa Ana Police Department, which is desperately needed after years of cover-ups like the Culicci Town incident. Director Morris, if you haven't heard about that, and if you're unfamiliar with it, I'd really recommend you talk to Chief Robert Rodriguez about it because he was complicit in the intentional delay and sabotage of the investigation of the Culicci Town incident. Instead of weakening our commission with these proposed amendments, we should be looking to and researching other successful models, like in Chicago. There, the police oversight body was also riddled with scandals until the Empowering Communities for Public Safety Ordinance was passed in 2021. I can't cover everything that's in this law in three minutes, but there is a lot that we can learn from. For starters, it established the Civilian Office of Police Accountability, called COPA, to independently investigate complaints against Chicago PD that are under their jurisdiction. It's roughly one-fifth of all complaints filed. They accomplished this by employing investigators, attorneys, and numerous supporting roles. By law, COPA receives a budget appropriation equal to at least 1% of Chicago PD's $2.7 billion. So imagine if we can make that kind of commitment for Santa Ana. 1% of Santa Ana PD's budget for police oversight. That'd be just over $1.5 million for independent investigations into police misconduct or soliciting public input on police policy and practices and a good qualitative step towards real police accountability. The Empowering Communities Ordinance also created 22 police district councils made up of local residents who coordinate monthly meetings for Chicago communities to share feedback on Chicago PD policies and practices. These councils function on a scale similar to our wards here in Santa Ana, and they can say it. They also nominate candidates for the, apologies, Community Commission for Public Safety and Accountability. This commission itself is a citywide body that can set goals for Chicago PD as well as recommend changes to their budget and even gives approval for new changes to police policies. The emphasis on empowering communities is really what we need here. It's because we need the input of the people most impacted by police violence and misconduct to give their input on all of these issues that we're facing today. They're not in this room, so I hope I can speak for them.
Next speaker is Karina Muñoz.
Hello, my name's Karina. I'm here as a member of CSO's Police Accountability Committee. We are here to demand that this commission defend its powers and not support changes that would weaken its ability to hold police officers accountable. The new ordinance would strip the commission and oversight director of the power to independently investigate submitted complaints as soon as possible. Instead, they would only review investigations by SAPD's Department of Internal Affairs after they've been completed. Additionally, the commission cannot review certain complaints unless their findings have been sustained by the Department of Internal Affairs. These complaints include in custody deaths, which we have seen not be thoroughly investigated many times. One incident involving two SAPD officers, Luis Casillas and Isaac Ibarra, came to mind. They participated in the shooting and killing of an unarmed innocent, Noe Rodriguez, December 1st, 2024, and they are still working on the force without any repercussions. I would like to add that Luis Casillas was also involved in an in-custody death, January 1st, 2025, with Henry Gonzalez Jr., where he shot Henry in the head after he failed to attempt to de-escalate the situation. Luis Casillas was allegedly then involved in the arrest and beating of a 15-year-old on June 9th of this year, where he suffered from broken bones, a punctured lung, and a broken eye socket. These officers continued to patrol Santa Ana without the citizens knowing their violent history and continued to live their lives as usual. While Noe's family have been mourning and have been fighting for justice for over nine months. If these amendments are put in place, cases like this will continue to be pushed under the rug. Once again, I must emphasize that these changes would destroy the Oversight Commission to independently investigate cases of police misconduct. Our investigative authority would be in the hands of the police because they get to decide what findings are sustained. If the police could be trusted to investigate themselves, we wouldn't have created this commission in the first place.
Next speaker is Emma Gottfried.
Hello, my name is Emma, and I'm from CSO Orange County's Police Accountability Committee, and I'm a resident of Ward Four. And we're here to demand that this commission defend its powers and not support any changes that would weaken its ability to hold police officers accountable. The proposed reasons for these changes are inconsistent and don't hold up. First, the language of the changes reference state law. And then, both in the previous city council meeting where the changes to these ordinance were discussed, it's referencing not being compatible with the city charter. And those also do not hold up. If there are any. It's crucial that this body remain independent, be able to hold investigations towards any aspect of police misconduct. There can't be limits on what aspect of misconduct that this commission can investigate. And the ability to, and removing this commission's ability to independently investigate all cases of police misconduct defeats the purpose of having this commission. There are constant incidents that need to be addressed, and limiting the ability of this commission is not going to help build trust between the city, between the police department and the residents. It will do the complete opposite. And. And I also just want to, once again, repeat the demand for justice for Noe Rodriguez and that officers Isaac Ibarra and Luis Casillas be fired and a proper investigation into their killing of Noe Rodriguez, who was unarmed, be taken up immediately. Thank you for your time.
Last speaker card is Bulmado Vicente.
Hello, commissioners. My name is Bulmado Vicente. I focus on me as Boomer, and I serve as the Policy and Political Director of CHISP. I was part of the coalition of impacted families, orgs, and residents who fought for years to pass this commission. We worked hand in hand with the city to ensure this ordinance was compliant in every way. The truth is, these proposed changes are related in fear. Fear of retaliation, fear of lawsuits, fear of the unknown, because of the very powers this commission holds. But these are local policy choices, not mandates. As new commissioners, you have the opportunity to be on the right side of history and uphold a 56-year-long community demand. Across the country, police oversight is dying. At the federal level, the DOJ has ended consent degrees in Minneapolis and Louisville, cities at the center of the 2020 uprisings. In Florida, Governor DeSanto signed a law banning oversight boards from conducting independent investigations or disciplining officers. In Tennessee, lawmakers dismantled oversight boards entirely. And in city after city, commissions are being defunded, denied access to records, and reduced to two-slice review boards. All this is happening while police violence remains at an all-time high. The number of police, the number of people killed by police has risen since the murder of George Floyd. Right here in Santana, we've seen back-to-back police shootings with families and groups like CSO demanding justice for Noe Rodriguez and calling for the firing of the officers involved. We stand with them. Weakening our commission will place Santana in line with this national retreat from accountability. Instead, we must show courage. Oversight without power is no oversight at all. That means, one, preserving investigatory and disciplinary powers for the commission and having access to all complaints not just sustained, limiting us to only IA reviews or sustained complaints with silence the community and shield misconduct. Two, maintain a dual investigation models. Cities have shown this is possible with IA and a director are present in the same interview, asking their own questions, all while complying with POBAR. Santa Ana can do the same. Three, keep a direct pathway to city council. If the city manager ignores or waters down recommendations, the commission must retain the authority to bring findings directly to council. And lastly, retaining oversight of police union contracts. Reviewing MOUs with the police union is essential to ensure that contracts do not undermine accountability or transparency. And commissioners, this is a moment to lead, not retreat. If we weaken oversight here, we signal to every community that fear wins over accountability. But if we defend this commission's powers, we show Santana's committee the true oversight and power. Thank you.
Chair, that concludes the speakers that are present, and I have no speakers on Zoom.
Do we need to check with Commissioner Pereira?
Yes. Commissioner Pereira, do you have any speakers at your location?
Yes, at the location.
Can you repeat yourself? I'm sorry.
I can confirm that there is no speakers here in.
Okay. Chair, that concludes the public speakers.
Thank you. Okay, the next item is the consent item, Consent Calendar Items Number Ones. One and two is a motion to approve the Consent Calendar.
I'll second it, or I'll move to approve it.
I'll second.
Okay, so that was a motion by Vice Chair Lawton, seconded by Commissioner Vega, and that was to approve Consent Calendar Items One and Two. So Commissioner Garanski? Commissioner Mejia?
Yes.
Commissioner Pereira?
Yes.
Commissioner Said?
Yes, thank you.
Commissioner Vega?
Yes.
Vice Chair Lawton?
Yes.
Chair Carpenter?
Yes.
The vote is seven ayes, zero nays. Motion carries.
All righty then. Next on the agenda is the Study Session. Item number three pertains to Police Oversight Commission Ordinance Work Study. Police Oversight Commission Work Study Session. And before we get started, there'll probably be a lot of questions and comments from commissioners. If we could limit our first round of questions to 10 minutes and our second round to five minutes, that would be greatly appreciated, just so we can keep things flowing at a good rate. Thank you.
Can you clarify? What do you mean by that?
Each commissioner will have 10 minutes for their questions, and then a second round of five minutes for their questions.
We will wait till the end to ask questions? Is that what you're suggesting?
That's what I'm suggesting.
Okay. I'm not disagreeing, just wondering.
No, I agree. Thank you for clarification. So staff?
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you so much for being here. Today, we're going to be holding the Work Study Session for the Police Oversight Commission Recommendations. And this came about due to proposed amendments that were considered by city council on July 15th to the ordinance. There was an ad hoc committee that was convened with Mayor Amesqua, Councilmember Phil Becerra, and Mayor Pro temp Benjamin Vazquez. We also met with the Santa Ana Police Department representatives, city manager's office representatives, and city attorney's representatives. The reason that that ad hoc was established was because we had identified certain issues with the current ordinance as it was written. So what I'm gonna share today is, what I'll just quickly share today, is at that meeting on July 15th, there was a request from our city council to bring this back with the commission in a joint study session. Now, we were unable to schedule that joint study session, but we are having this Work City Session for tonight, and then on September 16th, we will have the Work Study Session with city council. As of now, we have met with commissioners and city council members and our internal teams to discuss the current ordinance as it stands, an ordinance that was proposed, and some other ideas, and we were able to answer questions. So today, this Work Study Session is to get your input. This input will then be presented at the Work Study Session for our city council meeting. And with that, I will pass it on to our Oversight Director, Jack Moore, so he can give us a presentation before we begin the discussion.
Thanks, Sylvia. How do I go about getting the presentation up on this? Okay. Good evening, commissioners. I'm Jack Moore, the Oversight Director. I prefer to stand when I give a presentation, so here I am, standing. Wanted to initially talk about a hybrid oversight model. There's been a lot of talk about a model that focuses on the investigations of individual officers versus a model rooted in sort of a pattern and practice approach to investigations. So I want to talk about a third option that will blend elements of both of those. Just for a little bit of background, as you know, the current ordinance gives the Police Oversight Director authority to investigate officers alleged to have engaged in ten different types of misconduct. Eight of these are taken from Penal Code 832.7, which governs which documents and which information from an officer's personnel file may be released publicly. As you also know, with the current structure, any investigation that the Police Oversight Director conducts is also conducted by Internal Affairs or SAPD supervisor. So there will always be, based on the current structure, duplicative investigations, one by IA and one by the Police Oversight Director. As you also know, at the July 15th city council meeting, the city council considered proposed changes to the ordinance that was developed by an ad hoc committee. That revision in July shifted the Police Oversight Commission away from investigating individual officers and moved toward investigating patterns of potential misconduct. So under that model, these investigations regarding patterns of misconduct may entail things like use of force, stop and frisk, et cetera. Under the revised model, the Police Oversight Commission may still make recommendations, may make recommendations to prevent future misconduct based on those investigations, and it may still make its own recommendations to the chief after each IA investigation is conducted. So IA would conclude its investigation. I, as the Police Oversight Director, would have an opportunity to review that investigation. And assuming there is sufficient time under POBAR, I could then, I and the Police Commission could then make recommendations to the chief regarding what we think about IA's investigation findings and recommendations. More information about the proposed changes, they do maintain consistency with the city charter, city manager form of government, and it affirms the Police Oversight Director's advisory and independent role. The ordinance, the draft ordinance specifically says that the Police Oversight Director, independent from the police department, provides a review of, analysis, and recommendations on police practices. So maintaining that independence of the Police Oversight Director. It's worth noting that the revised changes do not require a charter amendment. Background on this point, Oakland voters passed Measure LL, which allowed the city to establish a police oversight entity that investigates complaints and recommends discipline. That went to the voters, and it passed. Additional requirements in the current draft proposal includes various training issues. There's a required eight-hour ride-along within the first 90 days of a commissioner's appointment. And commissioners also attend the SAPD Community Academy sometime within the first 18 months of their appointment. The academy is provided twice a year. It's not the full-blown recruit academy. It's a community academy that entails two- to three-hour classes on issues such as communications, patrol, the jail, crime scene investigations, IA, air support, traffic stop, use of force, homicide investigations, and SWAT. So those are, as you know, those are two options currently on the table, so to speak. A third option that the city may consider is a hybrid model that borrows elements from both of these approaches. So option number one on the books now, the individual officer model, where the primary function of the Police Oversight Commission is to investigate individual incidents and individual officers in any pattern or practice investigations would be secondary. Option number two, as discussed in July, would be a model that, the primary function of which would be to conduct pattern and practice investigations of things like use of force, stop and frisk, that type of thing. Now, a hybrid model would contain elements of both of those frameworks. So under a hybrid model, the Police Oversight Director could conduct limited investigations of individual officers and individual incidents and would have broad authority to conduct pattern and practice investigations of other issues of concern. Now, one approach, or how I envision that this may play out, given the limited resources of the Police Oversight Director, the Police Oversight Director could focus on investigating officer-involved shootings, uses of force that end in great bodily injury or death. This would still give the Police Oversight Commission the authority to review any other investigations conducted by IA, but in terms of its personal authority to investigate individual incidents and individual officers, it would be focused on those incidents where people have been subject to the greatest amount of harm. In terms of resources and bandwidth, I think that this hybrid model, where the Police Oversight Director is focused on individual incidents where shootings have occurred or other serious use of force incidents, is feasible because, on average, since 2010, SAPD has had an average of about two officer-involved shootings a year. There are comparable number of incidents involving great bodily injuries, such as canine dog bites. Bear in mind that each investigation could take months to resolve, but meanwhile, while that is going on, the Police Oversight Director can conduct robust investigations of potential ongoing and persistent problems, such as issues with IA investigations. The Police Oversight. The Police Oversight Director could investigate a statistically relevant sample of IA investigations and opine on whether those investigations are thorough, timely, and unbiased, and could also opine on any findings made and discipline imposed. The Police Oversight Director could conduct pattern and practice investigations of general use of force incidents, the use of, the use of less lethal weapons, stop and frisk issues, pet stops, vehicle stops, vehicle pursuits, verbal threats that SAPD officers may make to members of the public, and could also look at things like jail, jail conditions and suicide risk. So, these investigations may identify recurring, recurring policy violations or the need to change policy. Something to keep in mind is that if, if the, if the Police Commission is focused on conducting individual investigations, those investigations are looking at whether or not current policy has been violated, not, it's not a broader look at whether policies should be changed or whether new policies should be created. So with, with a model focused on pattern and practice investigations, the goal is to look at the root causes of problems and address them through new policies, policy changes, new training, that type of thing. So, so some suggested language to add to the ordinance would be the following. The Police Oversight Director shall be authorized to conduct substantive investigations of Police Department policies, protocols, and practices, patterns of conduct that may result in harm to individuals. And the Police Oversight Director will have access to Police Department personnel, documents, data, and information as needed in order to conduct the work of the Police Oversight So in terms of how this might look logistically, again, right now, IA is charged with investigating any complaint of misconduct and any officer-involved shootings, and those would, would continue. So what you would see is a parallel Oversight Director investigation while the IA investigation is ongoing. So currently, when there's an officer-involved shooting, IA responds, well, first of all, there are multiple investigations. So there's a criminal investigation, as you know, that's conducted by DA or DOJ, depending on the circumstances. That's looking at whether criminal conduct has been, was committed by, by the officer in question. An IA conducts an administrative investigation, looking at whether that officer or those officers have violated SAPD policy. So, an IA representative responds to the scene, interviews the involved officers, I believe typically within 24 hours, and then that IA investigator will conduct their investigation and draft a report citing relevant evidence and marshaling the relevant facts. That report then goes to a force review board. They analyze all the evidence, and then the board determines any, whether policy was violated and makes recommendations regarding discipline, which then goes to the chief, and then the chief makes the final determination in that regard. Is that right, Commander? Okay?
That's correct.
Okay. So, so that's the current structure. If I, or if the Police Oversight Director were, were offered to conduct simultaneous, simultaneous investigations, it could like, look like this. I could respond, I could respond to the scene, and I would coordinate with IA to conduct interviews of the officers. This could mean that an IA investigator and myself are in the room together when that officer is asked questions about the, the shooting. While IA is conducting their investigation, I would conduct my own, and then I would submit my report with findings as to whether or not the officer violated policy. I would submit that report to you, to you as the commission. You could then ask me to investigate further if there are unanswered questions, issues that you feel are left unaddressed. I could, I could look further into the incident in question, or you could just forward it directly to, to the chief. The chief would then have two reports. The one from the Oversight Director and the Police Commission, and the one from IA and the Force Review Board. If they are in agreement as to the findings, then, then no real issue there. If the two reports are in conflict as to whether or not the officer violated policy, then the chief would determine which findings to adopt and what discipline to administer, if any. So, I know that some people get tired of hearing about Oakland and LA, but I'm gonna talk about Oakland and LA anyway. Point being, to show that this model I'm, I'm suggesting is, is not something new, I'm not reinventing the, the wheel here, this is how they do things in Los Angeles. So, Los Angeles has, has an officer, has an Office of Inspector General, and whenever there's an officer-involved shooting, LAPD's Force Investigation Team, or FID, rolls out to the scene, and an OIG investigator rolls out as well. And the two entities conduct their, their investigations separate and in parallel, but they're both looking at whether or not the LAPD officer violated policy. FID drafts their report, the OIG drafts their report, and they make their individual findings. They may or may not conflict. Those reports go to the Police Commission in Los Angeles, and the, and just so you know, in LA, both the chief and the Inspector General report to the Police Commission. So anyway, that report goes to the Police Commission, and then they resolve any discrepancies, and they determine which findings to adopt and which discipline to impose. So that's Los Angeles. In Oakland, as you may know, Oakland has the CPRA, which is the Community Police Review Agency, and that is an oversight body led by a director with a full-time staff of investigators, and, and all they do is investigate police, alleged police misconduct. Whenever there's a shooting in Oakland, Oakland PD, IA rolls out to the shooting, as does a CPRA investigator. When that officer is interviewed, there is an IA investigator in the room asking questions, and there's a CPRA investigator in the room also asking questions. That interview is concluded, then IA and CPRA go their separate ways. They each conduct their own investigation, they each draft their own reports, they make findings, and if they're in conflict, Oakland's chief will determine which findings to adopt and whether to impose discipline. All right. So that's how a hybrid model could work. That's how it works elsewhere, and that's how it could work in, in Santa Ana. I also want to talk a little bit more about the, the pattern and practice element of, of what the Police Commission could do. And, and if you adopt a model that's, that's entirely based on a pattern and practice framework, or if you adopt a hybrid model where there are limited individual investigations, and there are, and there's also a strong emphasis on pattern and practice investigations, I think you will see that the pattern and practice, practice investigations are where you can find the most long-term change to the SAPD in terms of changing culture, systems, and conduct. As an example, I'm gonna talk about a case involving the Cleveland Division of Police in Cleveland, Ohio. So when I was an attorney at the US Department of Justice back in 2012, we became aware of officer-involved shooting in, in Cleveland. Facts of the case are this. It was November 29th, 2012. A vehicle driven by Melissa Williams and Timothy Russell, local residents, drove by a police officer. The officer thought that he heard firearm discharge from the vehicle. The officer initiated a vehicle pursuit, and the, the vehicle fled. A pursuit ensued. It took close to 30 minutes, at times reached speeds up to 100 miles per hour, and more than 100 officers in 60 different patrol cars eventually joined that chase. It ended in a parking lot in nearby East Cleveland, and the officers essentially surrounded the suspect's vehicle. Officers opened fire, and 13 different officers discharged a total of 137 rounds at the vehicle. Both individuals were struck more than 20 times each. Both were dead, both were killed, and both were unarmed. That got the DOJ's attention. Now, the Civil Rights Division does not have authority to take action based on one individual incident. Our authority rests on whether there is a pattern or practice of unconstitutional, unconstitutional conduct, violations of the Fourth Amendment, violations of the Fourteenth Amendment, and so on. We used that incident as a springboard to launch a pattern or practice investigation in Cleveland to determine if this was just a one-off incident, or if this was emblematic of a troubling pattern within the, the CDP. So we, we began our investigation. As part of this review, we looked at more than 600 use-of-force incidents, including deadly force incidents. We analyzed Cleveland use-of-force policies and procedures. We attended academy training and in-service training regarding the, the use of force. We conducted interviews with community members, community leaders, patrol officers, commanders within the CDP. We went on ride-alongs, and we looked at CDP's internal accountability systems to assess whether officers were sufficiently reporting use-of-force incidents, and whether supervisors were sufficiently investigating, reviewing those incidents internally, and whether officers who violated policy were being held accountable. So, our conclusions were that officers shoot at people who do not pose an imminent threat of death, of death or serious bodily injury to the officer or others. Too often, Cleveland police officers were hitting people who were handcuffed. Routinely, Cleveland police officers hit people on the head with their firearms. One problem with using your weapon as a, with using your firearm as a impact weapon is that accidental discharges can occur. And sure enough, we found that accidental discharges routinely occurred with Cleveland police officers. We also found that over a course of a four-year time span, there were 4,427 use-of-force incidents, and CDP supervisors found all of those incidents to be justified. Even though we found glaring problems, CDP supervisors were, were, were finding those use-of-force incidents to be justified. In addition, between 2005 and 2011 in Cleveland, officers used tasers 969 times, and all but five were deemed justified, which is nearly 100% clearance rate. So, when you conduct a pattern and process investigation, you're not just looking at, at what happened. You're not just looking at the troubling conduct that occurred. You want to look at the root causes of what caused that conduct, and you want to address the root causes of that conduct so that it ceases to occur moving forward. So in Cleveland, we looked at why are we seeing these tremendous problems with, with the use of force? Why is it that Cleveland police officers so often, for example, are using their firearms as impact weapons? Well, much of it came down to inadequate policies and inadequate training. Cleveland police policies insufficiently focused on de-escalation. There was little to no crisis intervention policies or crisis intervention training for Cleveland police officers, and it was allowable for officers in Cleveland to use their firearm as an impact weapon. In fact, on the use-of-force report form, there was a checkbox that an officer could check if they used their firearm as an impact weapon to hit someone on the head. Also, we found that there was just a poor use-of-force review. We found that there were inadequate IA investigations, and that often supervisors used rubber-stamped reports rather than conducting a robust analysis to ensure that the officer's use of force was consistent with the law and with policies. So, what did DOJ do? We implemented corrective measures that CDP had to, had to implement. This entailed new policies and training regarding de-escalation and crisis intervention. We established specialized crisis intervention teams within Cleveland to respond to people experiencing a mental health crisis. We implemented more robust reporting and reviews, so that when an officer was filling out the narrative on their use-of-force report, they had to articulate why they used the force that they did, what actions the subject engaged in that necessitated that, that, that use of force, and why the officer determined it was a reasonable and proportional reaction. Supervisors then had to make that same analysis as that report went up the chain of command. We implemented a general ban on using firearms as impact weapons, and we required officers to document unholstering their firearms in certain situations. Why is that? Well, with this problem we found of police officers using their firearms as, as impact weapons, what we found was that officers too often were, were prematurely unholstering their weapons when they, even though the subject may be unarmed. The officer may then find themselves in a fistfight with, with, with the subject. They don't have time to reholster their, their weapon, so they start using it as a, as an impact weapon. So, we wanted to be able to, to track that and continue to assess that issue moving forward and, and outcomes of that issue. So, so we began requiring officers in certain situations, not all, to document their own unholstering of their firearms. We also implemented more, more restrictions on taser use. We found that sometimes officers would tase someone, and they would cycle that taser again and again and again, even though it wasn't having the desired effect. If you're using a particular force option and it's not having the desired effect, you need to transition to a different force option. So, we implemented a requirement that officers could not cycle their taser any more than, than three times, that's three, five, three, five-second cycles, then they had to, and if it still wasn't effective, then they had to transition to, to a different force option. We also worked with the Police Department in Cleveland to implement an early intervention system to track potentially problematic officers. Idea being that if an officer was starting to exhibit problematic conduct, even if it wasn't rising to the level of a policy violation, we and supervisors wanted, wanted to be aware of that issue so that a supervisor could have a conversation with, with that officer and, and just ensure that, that that officer understood applicable policies and was, was not experiencing any personal conflict that may be impacting his or her work. Okay. So, so we implemented all these changes, and we didn't stop there. We monitored the Police Department to, to assess the outcome of, of these measures. So, we began working with the Police Department in Cleveland around 2016 to revise their use-of-force policies. We created brand-new crisis intervention policies. We created new crisis intervention teams, new, new de-escalation policies, new de-escalation training. By the end of 2017, so we did that throughout 2016 and 2017, by the end of 2017, all officers had been trained on these new policies and protocols. All the policies were in place and effective, and officers could be held accountable for violating them. And then we started measuring use-of-force incidents. And what we found, moving from 2017 to 2018, use-of-force incidents by Cleveland police officers fell by 29%. They dropped from 237 incidents in 2017 to 168 in 2018. What we also found is that incidents of violent crime fell, and officer injuries also decreased. Why is that important? Well, pushback, as I've, as I've been a part of teams that have investigated at Police Departments across the country, and as we've worked to implement reforms, pushback that we typically get is, if you implement new use-of-force strategies, new policies, new restrictions, that's gonna hurt our officers in the field. They're gonna be afraid to act. Subjects will become emboldened, and our officers will get hurt. In Cleveland, that didn't happen. Overall, officer injuries were down 20%, 20%, and you, and officer injuries related to use-of-force injuries were down 22%. And again, crime also fell. Why is that important? Pushback that we have gotten elsewhere is, if you implement these new strategies, again, subjects, criminals are gonna feel emboldened, crime is gonna skyrocket. That didn't happen in Cleveland. So even though we implemented these robust policies that, that more strictly, more, more constitutionally governed the way in which officers may use force, we still saw a decrease in, in violent crime. Now, note, we made no findings regarding that November 2012 shooting where 137 Now, note, we made no findings regarding that November 2012 shooting where 137 rounds were discharged. We made no specific findings on that incident. We made no recommendations regarding discipline of those officers. We had no effect on how that individual incident was handled. But we used it as a platform to launch a broad investigation into CDP's overall force systems and culture to identify problems and work to prevent incidents like that 2012 shooting from happening again. And I think that this commission could be well-positioned to have a similar effect here in Santa Ana if it focuses on SAPD systems, processes, and protocols. And I'll take questions from my seat.
Okay, we'll start it for 10 minutes each on each commissioner. Whoever would like to start, that would be fine.
Can you hear me now? I was just wondering, how does this process that you use to investigate all of this, their police and their actions, the way they handle things, have you done that, has Santa Ana done that? That same type of operation to find out what percentages we have about crime falling down?
I don't know what has been conducted prior to my appointment here. I certainly haven't, as you know, and the Police Commission hasn't. I don't know what sort of internal review, if any, the Police Department has conducted, but I think that the benefit of having an external oversight body conduct that type of review is that we are independent, right? And that becomes a public report, and that becomes a method to change policies and protocols moving forward to shift SAPD culture where needed.
Could the Police Department answer that? You think my question?
No, we currently don't have an outside agency investigate our.
That's what it is.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. That was quite interesting. Go ahead, somebody else.
Go ahead and take your 10 minutes if you need it, and then we'll come back for another five. So do 10, and then we'll come back for a second round of five.
Let's see if I have what notes I took back here. Some of the question marks I put here on my stuff was the initials, what they all stood for, like the OUF, use-of-force. As you went down, I found it. Oh, here's one. Speaking of the Cleveland Police Department, with all that, not you, but all that has been accomplished to try and help that Police Department, do they get support from the city residents? Do you know?
Sorry, do they get support?
Get support from the city residents, yes. Such as when we had our COP program here, the residents and the police got along quite well. And, you know, they taught us, and we informed, we made them aware of neighborhood problems and things like that. But we did, we supported the Police Department quite a bit back then, and I still do at times. But that's, I was just kind of wondering, since, how does Cleveland, the residents of Cleveland, support their Police Department? Do they, or don't they, or do you not know?
Well, it depends on the resident, I suppose, but we did find that there was a disconnect, a division between the Cleveland Police Department and certain members of the community. As an example, during our investigation, so Cleveland has a number of different police precincts, and at one police station within their vehicle bay, there was a large sign that said, and this was, this police station was on Chester Street, so it's this Chester Street Station, and the large sign in the vehicle bay said Ford Operating Base, Chester. Now, you may know that a Ford operating base is a militarized outpost in a war zone. When I was with the Army in Iraq, I spent a lot of my time on FOMS, or Forward Operating Bases. So it's a military term, and that told us that the Police Department itself saw itself as a military force occupying the community. And we found that there were certain segments of the community that didn't trust the Police Department, and certain members of the Police Department that certainly felt unappreciated by members of the public.
I have a question here. I guess it was to myself, because I really hate to ask it. I was wondering, how does Cleveland rate with Santa Ana?
I can't compare the two. I'm not saying that Cleveland is Santa Ana. Please don't, that's not the takeaway. I have conducted zero investigations here in Santa Ana. I cannot compare the two agencies, and they're policing in very different parts of the country. The point in my presentation was to say, this is the type of pattern or practice investigation we could conduct in Santa Ana to identify any persistent, ongoing problems and implement solutions to address those problems.
Okay. I think that's about it. Yeah, go ahead. I'll need the rest of my two minutes, two or three minutes there.
Yeah, again, you'll have five minutes again after we go through everybody.
Okay. And is this for just for clarification? Are you suggesting this portion would be only for clarifying questions, or also our feedback?
Well, I think it's on this work-study session, so both.
So both, okay. No, just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, yeah.
That's all. I'm not trying to be argumentative. So I do, so I'll start with my questions, and then I'll provide my feedback. On the, so the way you presented, right, this hybrid model, your presentation, I understood it slightly different than what's on writing, and so I wanted to get a little bit of clarification, because maybe I'm just misunderstanding the writing. So when you talk about this parallel investigation, right, is this only for, are you suggesting the parallel investigation with you still with AI, conducting the investigation but independently, right, just saving resources? Is my understanding, are you suggesting that the hybrid model would be for all, or were you suggesting during your presentation that it would only be for those that are dictated to be together, right? Because there's still some that's the beginning, holding some investigatory power for some of those misconducts, and then the other one suggests this parallel of looking after AI. So I was wondering what those differences were.
Sure, let me see if this answers your question. So the way I envision that the hybrid model is the Oversight Commission and the Police Oversight Director would be empowered to conduct investigations of individual incidents and individual officers where there is an officer-involved shooting, a use-of-force that ends in death, or a use-of-force that ends in great bodily injury, such as a canine bite. So IA already investigates those, so I, or whoever the Oversight Director is, would conduct a separate administrative investigation to determine whether there's any policy violation. By necessity, in some regards, I would need to coordinate with IA. Under POBAR, you can investigate, you can interview or interrogate an officer once regarding a specific allegation. If a secondary interrogation occurs later, then that triggers a mechanism by which that officer gets access to any underlying notes, reports, and so forth. That's something that I would certainly want to avoid. So I would want to limit the questioning of that officer to one interrogation. Under POBAR, there can be up to two interrogators, so that could be me and an IA investigator. Again, that's how they do it in Oakland.
Yeah, I think, so yeah, that helps. So thank you. I think that's where I was a little confused on the page 11, that for the parts that are 665 on the actual, your edits, on section 665B for here, right, receive review, so you're saying, when you are doing the investigation, you're suggesting to be in parallel, given to avoid any POBAR limitations, right?
My.
Recommendation, yeah.
Sorry?
Your recommendation, right?
Yes, yes. I would conduct a parallel administrative investigation for those specific use-of-force incidents. Any other complaint under PCA32.7, IA would conduct their investigation, and then I could audit those investigations to assess whether or not the IA investigation was timely, thorough, unbiased, et cetera. And, you know, to my point earlier, I and the Police Commission could look at, you know, a statistically-relevant sample of IA investigations over the course of a year, two years, whatever, and identify ongoing problems with IA investigations, if they exist, and put forward methods and techniques to address those.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. So obviously, we all had our individual meetings, right? We've had discussions about this. You have heard my perspectives and pushback on some of the amendments, but for transparency purpose, obviously, the public has not heard our discussions of what we've discussed on those. But I do hear you, and I do appreciate you sharing the experiences from other jurisdictions that you've worked with. I think it was helpful to get like a clear example of how this can work in terms of long-term culture change. So I think that was helpful for me to understand. And I believe, so still, some of my concerns, so I do appreciate and can understand the hybrid model a little bit better. I think what I like about it is that it sets some clarity, and that, at least from my understanding from the latest version, we still have investigatory powers for deadly use of force, right? And I think that we should still maintain that. My pushback or questions is, oversight is meant to mitigate financial and, you know, harm. So waiting on the 2665, sorry, 2-665 on the powers on the Section 4, where assessed incidents involving Santa Ana police officers, when the Internal Affairs, other Senate investigations is completed, and the incident involves allegations of, and you list those, I think waiting for the Internal Affairs is still something that I don't, that to me creates a legal limitation, right? This is something that I voiced in the meeting. I understand why we need to ensure that we're reducing the scope, and I recognize the limitations that we have financially. We would be lying to the public if we said we can investigate every case. That's just untrue, and I think that we shouldn't state that either, because that would create false hopes. But, and so I understand why we need to narrow the scope. I don't think we need to create a limitation, though. And so I wonder if, from your experience, what would be some alternatives? So, for example, I like the idea of looking at this together, right, with IA, but do we have to wait? Like, the when they have determined is a part that I'm not really understanding why.
So, when, who has determined what?
When Internal Affairs.
When?
So on the, on Section 4, right, on page 5, on the 2665 one, it says incidents, and I scribbled all over it, so, incidents involving Santa Ana police officers when the Internal Affairs or other SAPD investigation is completed, and the incident involves allegations of, right, prejudice or discrimination involving a protected class, dishonesty, sexual assault, unlawful arrest, or unlawful search, or excessive force, failure to intervene against another officer using force that is clearly unreasonable, excessive, and then you added the unreasonable or excessive use of force. So my question is, my understanding is that this creates a legal limitation for the commission to ask, right, because this is on our commission powers, to ask you to investigate something only after they have looked at it. And while I understand that financially, we won't be able to, right, in terms of, like, let's say, we cannot, you cannot separately investigate it, it's just costly, I understand that, but by actually writing it here, it creates a limitation that we, I don't think we need to have.
I think, I think any police oversight entity is most effective when it is looking at systems, when it is looking at the culture of a police department, when it is looking at trainings and policies. And I think any, an oversight entity is most effective when it's changing those aspects of a police department. And so, and so I think, in my opinion, having had investigated police departments across the United States and worked to reform a number of different law enforcement agencies, I think if you want to see long-term change, that comes from these very thorough exhaustive investigations, not just of individual incidents, but of problematic patterns, and getting at why those patterns have emerged, and then addressing those underlying causes. So, I think, no matter how many, no matter how many resources is allotted to an oversight body, they're always going to be limited. No one has unlimited time, right? So, you know, the CPRA in Oakland, they've got a full-time director and at least six investigators, last time I checked. But even they have a backlog, and even they sometimes miss that one-year deadline. Given the limitation in resources that will always be there, even if one day the Police Oversight Director is full-time here and has a staff of 12, there will still be limitations. I think that the oversight entity will still be most effective if it's looking at police departments' systems and not conducting parallel investigations of IA for more, for allegations other than serious use of force.
Yeah.
Now, to your point, if, let's say that you leave that provision in there, so the POC and the Oversight Director has the authority to investigate anything under A32.7, for example. And the idea being, oh, well, the Director and the Police Commission will use their discretion and just pinpoint those most serious incidents. You know, I'm working to draft this, not just for me, right, but for my successor, and not just for all of you, but for police commissions, you know, years down the line. Not everyone may be as judicious as we are. And so, I want to see us put in together, put together a framework that works not just for this commission, but any commission down the line. So I think that if you structure the commission so that it's designed to conduct pattern and practice investigations, and so that it can't get sidetracked with a lot of investigations of individual incidents, I think that's where you'll see the most effective outcomes for years down the line.
Yeah, I do understand that, and I agree. That was in my misunderstanding or my pushback. So maybe, let me give you an example. What I'm suggesting is that, I do agree that looking at patterns and looking at systemic, it's more efficient, and that we can actually change culture that way. I like that aspect of the changes. I agree with that. The reason why I'm pushing back specifically on here is because, the reason why this commission was created is because Internal Affairs doesn't have the public's trust at this moment, let's just be honest. And if we're trying to work with building community relations, we need to first build that trust, right? If we insert this here as of now, I'm not suggesting that the alternative is to investigate all of these cases on the side, because that's unproductive, we don't have the funding, we won't get anything done. Nothing annoys me more than wasting time. So that is not my goal. But rather, I'm thinking of future, and if we allow this, and what we're creating is that, in the future, we know that, you know, IA can be timely, things can happen, what if there's an event where we do need to investigate, and it's something more serious or something like that? We are creating a limitation at this moment. Now, I do think scope matters, right, but I don't think the, we need to include a legal limitation of what you're envisioning, right, that we cannot do, and I understand, I do understand that you're thinking in the future. I think that's practice, right? There's legal. There's legal writing and then there's practice. How does this actually come into play? And that is in the bylaws and we can add that in the bylaws, but I don't think this goes here. That's my point. That's my pushback. And I know that I owe you all the language that I was going to give you. It's all in here, I've just been so busy, but I will give it to you by tomorrow, I'll type it back and I'll give it to you all by tomorrow. But that is still, I just wanted to be, that the public should know what our pushback or changes are, that is. And so I know I'm limited on time, but there's a couple more things that I want to add. So one thing that I noticed was that the inclusion about the city manager deciding the agenda is in here, which is also in the bylaws, and I mentioned how I disagreed with that. And the reason for that is because I do think that it should be the oversight director or that we should, as a collective, vote on it, right? The agreement is that we would all get this one-page memo, which I've sent, and I don't think, I believe, have you, any of you received any of my one-page memo's? No, right?
No.
So they've never been sent? And so that is my problem. So we allow it to the city manager's office, then even though I'm sending and following protocol, no one's receiving them. But rather, I wanted to make sure that no matter if the city manager agrees with a topic we want to discuss, or they prioritize it, or they think this is going to cause, you know, disagreement, that at least that all of us have the ability to look at it and vote on it. And so that is my recommendation to switch it in the new amendments, so that it follows what we initially discussed in the bylaws anyways. The other one is the ride-along. Thank you for clarifying. I know, you know, Jorge, we spoke, spoke about the, the changes. It was supposed to be the academy, the training that is clear, I don't have, I don't have any concerns about that, but I do have concerns about the ride-along. I think that I've, I've done plenty of ride-alongs with plenty of other jurisdictions, not in Orange County, but plenty around California. I'm not opposed to learning, I'm not opposed to, to understanding that ride-alongs are really essential, but we know also the political climate of some, of some commissioners here, right? So I personally feel uncomfortable going on ride-alongs here, not in general, but here. And if I am going to go on a ride-along, then I want to include that any liability would be added to the employee contract for the P O A. So if, if commissioners are going to be going into ride-alongs, usually when you go on a ride-along, you sign off, right? Like you sign off that you are liable for your own, if anything happens, then we should add that. That is not the case for commissioners. I don't know if Santa, maybe Santa Ana P D has a different ride-along agreement.
I believe, I believe that what you mentioned is what we have.
Yeah, that's normal. So that is, that is what is the norm, but if we're going to be asked to be going on ride-alongs, then I want us to include that in some way that we are not liable if something happens to us, that the Santa Ana P D is liable, and preferably for that to be included in the employee contracts when you're making negotiations with the P O A. In addition, I want to clarify that even though it wasn't directly stated, right, we know what these potential allegations really are about. And if the P O A really wants to reduce some of the liability, then maybe, you know, that can be another alternative in the future with the city manager's office about employing contracts that when Santa Ana officers are in a lawsuit instead of Santa Ana, the city of Santa Ana paying for them, maybe we can add that to the P O A's contracts. So it would come from the P O A's fund as opposed to city of Santa Ana, just an option. And I will wait for the other time.
Thank you. Anybody else? Comments, questions? Go ahead.
I have some questions. So, give me a sec here, let me just get oriented. Okay, so I guess I'll focus on the presentation first. The pattern and practice model, right, or the benefits of a pattern and practice approach to police oversight, I totally get the point, it's very efficient and you can make change on a systemic level, I totally get that. My question is, can't we already do that under the current ordinance?
To an extent, yes. I would broaden that authority, but, but yes, the current ordinance does, does allow at least some policy review. Yes.
What, what do you mean by at least some?
I, I don't have the language right in front of me, but, but yes, the, the current ordinance does allow the police oversight commission and the director to at least review SAPD policies and protocols. I can't, off the top of my head, I can't remember if it's all policies and protocols or, or just certain ones.
I, well, I, I mean, I, I don't remember exactly, but I think we can review every police policy and, and protocol in addition to conducting individual investigations of police officers and things like that. And so I guess my question is, if we can already do that under the current ordinance, what exactly, why would we adopt a new ordinance? And I get the benefits, you know, you, you gave a presentation about the benefits, but I also hear, you know, members of the community saying, you know, let's not strip the police commission of its powers. If we already have, if we can already operate in a way that avails itself of the advantages that you have explained with regard to like the pattern and practice review, then why change what already exists?
I, I, I think it, it's a matter of, of priority and, and, and framework. The way that the current ordinance is structured, a- as I read it, the, the priority is on conducting individual investigations of individual incidents regarding individual officers. That's the priority and, and pattern and practice investigations are, are secondary. Much of the language and the ordinance, it's focused on those individual investigations. I, I, my, my, what, what I think would work better long-term, and I, I think the way to, to change culture, again, is, is making the priority, the pattern and practice investigations, and individual investigations secondary. So just creating a, a, a framework in the ordinance that, that, that reflects that.
Okay. And I guess what I'll respond is that I don't read the ordinance as creating any priority, you know, over auditor-based model or the investigative model. I think it gives us flexibility. I think we as commissioners would have discretion to choose what approach we, we want to use. The problem that I see with the amended ordinance is that that is taking power away from us and so it's taking flexibility away from us. And my concern about the pattern and practice model is that I think it creates a system or an environment where many people have to have their rights vindicate, or their rights violated before we can take meaningful action. So for example, like in the, what was it, the Cleveland police example that you gave, right, with the, it was 100-plus officers, 62 patrol cars, 137 rounds fired. In that example, you came in and you conducted, you used that as a springboard, like you said, right, and you conducted a review and you were able to make meaningful change, you know, from a systemic level, right? Because you found, you know, discrepancies or whatnot in the way that the Cleveland police operated. But my question is, what if that had been the first time that that had happened? Meaning, this was the first incident in which the Cleveland police did something totally egregious. In a pattern and practice model, you would, you wouldn't get involved, you, you really wouldn't have any authority to do anything, right? And so, is that, is that right, at least from what I understood?
Well, in the, in the hybrid model, yes, the, the SAPD, the police oversight director would have authority to individually investigate the officers involved in officer, officer-involved shooting.
Okay. I, I totally understand that point. I'm just, I'm talking broadly about a pattern and practice approach of police oversight. In, in a pattern and practice approach, in the example that you gave, if that had been the first time that that had ever happened, then, you know, the oversight commission wouldn't get involved, right? Because, or we, we wouldn't have any authority to really take action because we wouldn't be allowed to investigate or make judgment or whatever about that specific incident. We would have to wait until, you know, that, things like that happened over a period of time and then we would, you know, you know, perform analysis and things like that and make recommendations from a policy level. And so I guess what I'm saying is that I do think there's value in investigative model because it allows us to vindicate the rights of individuals before things get to the point where, you know, it's pervasive. And I, and I understand that you're not, you're not advocating exclusively an auditor model, but I just wanted to, to voice that. And then the other thing that I wanted to ask you is, are there any downsides to a hybrid model that you can see?
Well, again, there are always resource constraints. That, that will always be the case, no matter what the resources are. Going back to, to, to the C P R A in Oakland again, they have a lot of resources, they, they still at times experience a backlog. So that's, that's across the board. And then two, in, that whether, whether the police oversight commission is, and whether the, the police director is conducting individual investigations or pattern and practice investigations, ultimately, we just make recommendations. It's not our final decision. And that's, that's true in oversight generally, right? That's not unique to, to, to Santa Ana. If we investigate, if I investigate an, an individual officer, make findings, it goes to the chief and it's the chief's decision. And if we conduct a pattern and practice investigation and make findings, those recommendations, I think ultimately would go to the, the, the city manager. So, so ultimately, it's out of our hands, but, but, but that's an issue that, that's just commonplace in, in oversight.
Okay. Then the other thing I want to ask, and I don't know if you could speak to this, but I've, you know, we've heard a lot about conflict with the city charter. Can somebody kind of expand on that, on what exactly the conflict with the current ordinance is with the city charter?
Sure. The current ordinance under the city charter has an oversight director that gets appointed by the city council. Currently, our charter only allows three direct appointments, which would be the city attorney, the city clerk, and the city manager. The city manager has the responsibility for the administration of the city, which includes the police chief and the police department. So ultimately, he's the one that's responsible for ensuring that the chief is making the proper, that he's running the police department in a proper manner, making sure that if there's discipline required, that he's doing it the right way. So recommendations would be for the chief, ultimately for the city manager. When it comes to having another direct appointee, that would require a charter amendment. As the presentation stated, that in the city of Oakland, there was a charter amendment to allow for that fourth appointee or for that extra appointee. We would have to take that back to the voters if that's what we wanted to do.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I can go.
I'm sorry?
I can go.
Okay, thank you.
Just so I'm clear on what this ordinance allows us to do, any officer-involved shooting moving forward, you would investigate from the scene of the shooting to the IA interviews and then bring that investigation to us during closed session and we would be able to look at what was gathered, tell you if perhaps something's missing from that, and then make a finding regarding the O I S.
So, so in the hybrid model that I, I proposed, yes, I would respond to, to the scene, conduct an investigation that's parallel with, with IA's. I would write a report that would include findings. Did officer so-and-so violate use-force policy 300 or any other force-related policies? That report would go to the police commission and then you could read it and say, well, what about, I don't know, did you interview this witness or, or whatever? I don't know. But, but, but the feedback from, from the commission could, could be, look further into this element of the investigation or, or maybe you read the report and you think it's, it's, it's efficient and you forward it on, onto the chief.
Okay. And that would be an investigation to O I S resulting in death, O I S resulting in great bodily injury or use of force resulting in great bodily injury.
It's, it's any O I S or use of force resulting in death or great bodily injury.
Okay. To me, in terms of resources, I think last year, I don't know who brought this number up, but I think last year, and we literally did no investigations, and frankly, we still haven't done one, but it cost a million dollars and maybe I'm taking that number from, I don't, I don't know, but I heard someone say it's costing a million dollars to just have this commission and we had, we hadn't done anything yet. I don't know if that's true.
So that is what was budgeted in a prior year. This year, there was a budget allocated of $500,000 to cover the police oversight director. So because you haven't been doing the investigations, it's only the charges that would have occurred for any of the trainings that we provided.
Okay. Thank you. So with the budget constraints and obviously our time constraints, because we're not full-time like other commissions in, in different cities, I, I think that this is a decent model just because the, the complaints that we're receiving from the public have been O I Ss. I haven't, or I don't recall any other type of complaint other than O I Ss. I, I don't even remember a use of force not resulting in death. And maybe I'm mistaken on that, but I think this could be a, a good balance between the, the biggest goals, which is we don't want unnecessary death in our city and we want our police department to use force in a very strategic way, not, not, not recklessly. So I, I think that that does a nice job because if we were to, to investigate individual complaints, it just wouldn't be feasible. And I don't, my mindset and even when I work or do anything is I want to give 150% to whatever I do. I think if we're spreading out and just investigating, you know, a use of force that resulted in a bruise versus a use of force where bones were broken, great bodily injury, I'd rather use our time for that to really make a change. In terms of changing policy and practice, I think that would be extremely useful to study, especially with the public coming in here. I've been taking notes on the types of complaints I'm hearing and I think we can start to look at practice and policy and commonality and similarities between things and then put that forward on, on an agenda item or something to say, look, this is the sixth time we've heard the same complaint, we'd like to look into this, maybe you can pull the report so we can review here and receive these types of complaints and then implement the policy and practice change that would benefit the city, the residents, and the police department. I guess regarding the additional training, I always love learning, so I, I don't see it, it's just timing. I feel like it, it could be somewhat of an imposition on our schedules already, but the ride-along, I did the ride-along initially and I thought it was very beneficial, I've done it with other, other police departments. I'm not sure if Commissioner Mejia's concern is us getting injured by the public or by a police officer, so when, when it comes back to you, maybe you can clarify that, but I, I just wanted clarification. I did the ride-along, I signed the waiver, it was a, a good experience, I did the simulation, I did a tour of the police department. To me, it just gives me greater insight on the, the training so that if I want to implement change, I can do it in the most effective way so that our public isn't coming in and telling us about a new shooting. So I, I think that that is helpful to get into the mindset of the, the police officers that we're here to investigate and assess. I think also reviewing tort claims would be helpful to see what a common trend is about what the public is feeling. So I think that's definitely something we can use to implement change in the greatest number possible. So tort claims would be useful. There was something that someone brought up, sorry, give me a second. Oh, I think that this ordinance, in addition to the city charter conflict, I think the other conflict, when I watched the July 15th city council meeting, was a conflict with, I think, the P O A. So I'm not sure if this addresses all of the conflicts so that we're not going back and and forth, or if this is just a start, or maybe I'm not understanding that correctly.
I'm sorry, what was that statement about the POA?
The, that this, not the POA, sorry, POBAR.
POBAR.
Yeah. So would this address any concerns about that?
I think the initial issue was that dual investigations, bringing on Jack, he showed us a way where we could potentially have that dual type of investigation, but doing one interrogation versus two. So the way we had envisioned it was like everybody does their own investigate, or their own interrogations, so I think that kind of clears it up with the hybrid model and how he explained it to us, but I think there might, Cam, is there anything else that you'd like to share on POBAR?
The only thing is, obviously, it requires further massaging of the process, and how that process would work, and what components, if any, need to be met and conferred with the union. But the government code does allow for two interrogators, so technically, Mr. Morrison, the IA investigator could be in an interview together with the focus officer.
Okay. That's all for me, thank you.
I guess I'll go next. I don't have very much, because I think all the commissioners here asked some really good questions, and I do suggest to the public to go back and listen to the city council meeting of July 15th. There was a really good conversation there between the city council and staff. I'll get the training part out of the way, I'm in full support, I echo what Commissioner Said said. I've gone on a few ride-alongs, I felt that San Ana PD did a really good job in keeping me safe, keeping me at a very safe distance. And to our director, what is your opinion on the training? The added training that is in the ordinance?
Well, I'll start with ride-alongs. As an investigator, as I've investigated police departments in various cities, we always conduct ride-alongs. That gives us an opportunity to speak with individual officers that we're working with, we can get their insights into their view of policing within the city, and understand how patrol operations work. So for me, that's just been a routine part of investigating a police department, it gives one a understanding of the internal processes. And in terms, I've never been through a community police academy. As you know, I'm a reserve officer with LAPD, and having gone through the reserve academy, I feel that that has beneficially informed my work, as I worked with other police departments. Previously, in Orange County, I'm still in Orange County, but with Orange County Sheriff's Department previously, and now with Santa Ana Police Department, I feel that that helps inform my work, and makes me more attuned to contemporary issues in policing, and what officers deal with on a day-to-day basis, and how to make changes moving forward.
Thank you. And I agree in that, you know, we need to understand, you know, what a day is like for a police officer, but another thing too, is that, you know, if I go on three ride-alongs and I start noticing a pattern, you know, our police officers are, the way they speak to people when they, that are calling them, maybe the way they drive, we could start noticing certain patterns, so that helps us as commissioners to be able to recommend certain things, or point out certain things that we see while we're on the ride-along, so, thank you. So going to the pattern-practice investigation, so the changes to the ordinance that, for the July 15th, is that, would that be considered a pattern and practice investigation? Would there need to be any other language added or removed?
Short answer, yes. I would regard that as a pattern-practice model. My opinion is, it's too restrictive. So in the version of the ordinance that was circulated and discussed on July 15th at the city council meeting, it restricts any review that the Police Oversight Director may conduct to certain complaints under PCA 32.7, where the underlying investigation, IA investigation was sustained. I think that that's too restrictive, and as you may recall, at the time, Councilmember Becerra suggested broadening that provision of the ordinance, so that the director and the Police Oversight Commission weren't restricted to just investigating sustained findings from IA, but all of those types of incidents under 832.7.
Thank you. And so I would be supportive of that ordinance, and also, is there any issue, I guess this is a question for our attorneys, if we remove that restriction, would we still be in risk of liability?
It's not really a liability issue, it's privacy protection, so those records that are not disclosable to the public under 832.7, your oversight director would have to schedule closed session in order to discuss and circulate that information, because that would not be public.
Okay, so we could still remove that, but it would have to be conducted in a certain way, to still not go into conflict with what you just said?
In closed session.
Okay. So I think that, you know, at the end of the day, when it comes to making use of the resources that we have, I do support this pattern-practice investigation model, and that's because I think effectively, we're going to be able to verify the concerns of the community, and, you know, whether IA is not doing a good job, is there rampant corruption, and after some time under this model, let's say two, three years, we come to find out, shoot, there's a lot of things wrong here. Because when we're reviewing cases, we can see everything, right? We're not just seeing the conclusion, we could review the interrogation questions, the answers, body cam footage, all of that, right?
Well, I could, as the investigator, yes, those are things that I would look at.
Right, and so I think this is a good first start, again, given the resources that we have, because if we come to find out, under this model, that we need a much, much stronger, we need more powers and investigative powers, now we would be able to go back to the city council, and effectively, the public, because we're going to need more resources, and now we're going to be able to go to the city council, we're going to be able to go to the public and say, look, we need to change this into an investigative model, and here is the evidence, and we're going to need a bigger budget. And I feel like, in that scenario, the public would be more open to saying yes, because if we went to the public now, I mean, we have to tell the public that, look, an investigative model that's going to be effective, we need more resources. Where is that extra money going to come from? Your taxes, are they going to stay high, because we're facing a financial cliff pretty soon? Are we going to have to raise our taxes? Do we need to pull funds from Parks and Rec or whatnot? And I think they'll be more susceptible to saying yes, if we have evidence about our police department not conducting in a proper way. So my opinion is to do the pattern-practice investigation, and removing that restriction that we spoke about earlier.
Commissioner Pereira, is he still with us? I don't want to forget him.
He's been going in and out, so I'm going to give him a quick second, just to maybe try to log back in.
Okay. Please try.
Yes, it shows that he's joining at the moment.
Oh, excellent, thank you. You have 10 minutes for the first round.
Thank you, thank you, Chair. Thank you, Chair Carpenter, can you all hear me well over there?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sorry about that, I currently not in a good place with good signal, but I wanted to make sure that I am here present, so I've been able to listen to most of the conversation, but I just disconnected two minutes ago. So with that said, thank you, Director Morse, for the presentation, and also the information regarding the hybrid model that you're proposing, and some of the comparisons as well between the current language that we have and the proposed language from the city council. I just want to start by clarifying, Director Morse, you have provided your own draft of the ordinance, was that submitted on the agenda? I said on the agenda, transparency.
You're breaking up, man.
That item wasn't presented as part of this agenda, because it is a draft form, it's not something that we're currently reviewing to update our ordinance. The only ordinance presented to you today in this packet is a red line that went to the city council. And for today's work-study session, while there are a lot of questions regarding some of the very specific language, that language has not been fleshed out, still draft. So what we'd like to see is, what do you, what did you like from the ordinance, what don't you like from the ordinance, what recommendations would you make that we can take to the city council on what you would like to see, because then staff would take all of that information, go back with Mr. Jack Morse, and refine language for an ordinance to bring back to city council first reading.
Thank you, thank you, Deputy City Manager. The other question that I have in terms of process, the meeting on the city council coming up next Tuesday, it's a work-study session, right? Not a review of the ordinance, it's not the first reading of the ordinance, right?
That is correct.
Okay. So the work-study session will take place on Tuesday, council will hear, or hopefully they'll receive the feedback from more and as well, and then they'll have their own conversation, and then from there, the first reading of the ordinance will come to the council?
Yeah, so after we've gathered the recommendations from our city council at the next city council meeting, it's already agendized for September 16th, we would then internally work on it, make sure we refined it, to add anything that needs to be added based on the recommendations to bring it back for a first reading. At that point, the council then would have the opportunity to also review it, see if they like it, see if they'd like changes, and we could either accept it as is, or they would ask us to go back and maybe make some further reviews and edits.
Thank you, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that the process and the timeline is clearly laid out for the public, receiving questions from different residents as to like, you know, what's the process looking like? This is going to help. So first, I want to get started with addressing the issue that has been brought up as the main reason why, you know, we're going through this conversation about changing the ordinance on the staff report, and that we heard from Mayor Mesqua, the ad being that the ordinance is, in situation that the ordinance is not in compliance with state law. So I just want to make sure I get clarity on that, is, whether, specifically from the city attorney's office, and also Director Morse, I would like to get your opinion, is our current ordinance in compliance with state law?
Commissioner, can you repeat that? You broke up a little bit there.
Yeah, I just want confirmation from the city attorney's office, is the current language or current version of the ordinance not in compliance with state law?
I don't believe that the current ordinance is out of compliance with state law, I believe that there are issues that could arise, specifically with the dual-track investigations, that could potentially violate POBAR, and so the goal, as I understand it, with some of these amendments, is to create a process by which we're avoiding the possibility of further exposure to lawsuits by the public, by police officers, by making sure that the way the investigations, the dual investigations would proceed, would, I hesitate to use the word ironclad, because nothing's ironclad, but it would be more, it would be more in alignment, and it would avoid the possibility for that exposure that we're worried about.
Thanks, Assistant Attorney Martinez, and I think that's important for me, for the public, to understand that this ordinance is not out of compliance with state law, because I think that some of the misinformation that's been out there from some members of the city council that have been pushing for this change, is that we are not in compliance, and I think that that is an important distinction, because that was one of the premises as to why we began this conversation. The second one is, I know that there has some of the issues that have been mentioned around potential litigation, and I think, I believe at the last city council meeting, the issue came up about the LA situation. Assistant City Attorney Martinez, could you remind us again, what's the current issue within the sheriff and the sheriff's oversight commission?
I do not. Do you know, Director Morse?
Commissioner, I think you're referring to the lawsuit that...
Correct, correct.
Right, so the issue there, as I understand it, is the Oversight Commission for LA County had requested certain records from the Sheriff's Department, and the Sheriff's Department declined to hand them over, because doing so, the sheriff said, would violate PCA 32.7. So that issue is currently being litigated.
Director Morse, and again, the reason why I bring this up is because the council, this was brought up as one of the issues why we needed to change the ordinance, but case is gone. And also, state bill currently making its way, you know, the type of information that body hours should be receiving. So one of the issues with this whole conversation that we're having is that, so there's this push, is about, I'd make sure that that is clear to the public, that our ordinance is not out of compliance, and that currently the issue that has been cited around the legal case regarding the sheriff's oversight commission, is also being addressed by the state legislature, so I just want to make sure that we start with those facts. So now I'm going to get into my opinions regarding the changes, and kind of like what we're discussing here, and thank you, Director Morse, and the city staff, city managers, and city attorney, for the concerns that we've regarding, concerns about the version that's been presented to the city council. My big red line is, the actual language being presented strips the commission from its investigatory power, and I think that that is my red line, that I do not agree with. Director Morse, I really appreciate the hybrid model that you had presented, I understand that there is real concerns regarding the resources that our commission has to be able to conduct a great number of investigations, I think that that would be my preference, if the council, as we're discussing this, actually allocates the proper resources for the commission to properly function at its capacity. So I do not think that we need to, you know, we have to constantly make the case that we need more resources, when residents, over the last two decades, have been asking for accountability for this type of oversight model to be implemented, and quite frankly, we have had so many issues within our police department that have caused public outrage. So the concern, the case is already there for the city to invest more resources, so that is my, that is my position. But regarding the investigatory powers, I do want to make sure that we maintain that on the hybrid model, I do believe that we need to expand or... I do believe that we need to expand or audit powers to ensure that we also look into policies and reforms. But I don't want us to mistake that with the ability to conduct investigations is not set to policy change. I think that the issue around change part culture also relies on the strictness to ensure that the commission is able to properly investigate incidents, co-incidents. And so I think changing culture and policy requires the commission to have investigatory powers, because then the officers understand that are not doing good, that there will be an actual investigation and that this commission will not, you know, wait for things to happen several times. So that, that is my, as though the, the commission retained its investigatory power and standing our ability to conduct, to audit those investigations. Director Morse, I do not see you mention regarding one of them, one big change on the the current language, and that is the ability for the commission to review and provide recommendations to the city council regarding the Police Officers Association MOUs. Is there a specific reason why that wasn't mentioned, or is this more like it was not a, an important factor on, on this presentation?
Sorry, Commissioner, are, are you referring to language that was removed from the version that went to the city council on July 15th?
Yeah, that's correct.
Was that ad hoc?
I'd have to go back at my notes and look, but that was changed because the city manager has control over negotiations with the unions.
Commissioner, did you hear that response?
Yes.
Okay.
That, into my question is more, is, does it legally prohibit? Is there a legal prohibition for the commission to maintain that ability to review and provide feedback on this type of MOU to the city council?
It's not really necessarily a legal issue, it's what the charter provides in terms of the city manager's authorities. Now, the commission does not, is not precluded from discussing the MOU. They can discuss it under many of the other powers and duties that are listed in the ordinance. But it's, it's about making any kind of suggestions, changes, or interfering with the city manager's right to negotiate with labor unions.
Thank you, thank you. And so to me, this is a political issue. And so, you know, one of the major things that comes with accountability within our department sometimes can be governed by the contracts that is eventually the city council ends up signing with the Police Officers Association. And so that is within the purview of the commission. And I think that there has been concerns, great concerns over the last decade regarding the MOUs that the city council has approved with the Police Officers Association. And so I do believe my, my, my stance on this is that the commission should retain the ability to review and provide suggestions directly to the city council on its, this, this specific labor negotiation. So I think that that is, that is my, my, my line there. I hope that that is communicated. The other one is regarding the, how the commission receives complaints. One of the things, Director Morse, that I discussed with you was that, right now, currently the commission, you know, the process for reviewing the complaints or even as individual commissioners, it's not very practical. I do think that we should include language that, you know, since every, every month is summary, redacted summary via email to commissioners of the complaints that are coming in. I'm not sure how many of my colleagues on the commission have seen the most recent complaints, but I believe that, you know, we probably haven't. And so I think that there has to be a more consistent system and mechanism for us to receive those complaints redacted via email. But I also think those redacted complaints be posted publicly on the website. That does not exclude, does not include any personal information of officers or witnesses, but I think that we need a little bit more transparency of that. So for, for now, I have more questions, but I'll go back to when, again.
Thank you. Alrighty, well, I guess that's everybody but me. Couple of things. You know, I'm still not clear what our ordinance is going to be, because this, this red line that we've been given doesn't reflect any of the commissioner's comments from the past, past or with our meetings. So hopefully we'll see something before it goes to the council. And my other question is, or concern is, how much input are we really gonna have? How much influence does this commission truly have over the ordinance? I'm not convinced that we have a lot, but we'll have to see. Just a point of note here, if you look at section one, it's been almost two years since we were brought into existence in October, it will be two years. So that's just a point of reference for everybody. I'm not really gonna go into my likes and dislikes on this ordinance. I think I was very thorough with that in my four-page letter to everyone, and they should be in receipt of that, I would hope. So I don't think I need to belabor that. But I do, on, on the presentation, I do like the hybrid model. I think it's better to call it a root cause issue. To me, that is what, the, the only solution is to find the root cause. I don't care if it's a single incident or repetitive incident, you've got to find the root causes for that. And that applies to anything, it's a plane crash, car crash, whatever. There are always root causes to what brought about the incident. So that's, I think, a better terminology to be used in there. Again, without finding what the root causes are, that will never have any change at all. Yeah, so that's my comment on that. I like the idea of the hybrid model. I think it's good that, you know, Jack could be there at the same time and thinking it kind of avoids a lot of our legal issues. My concern too is this doesn't get logged down in a bunch of legal issues, because that doesn't do us, the community, the police, the city any good at all. So I hope our council and everybody can work together to get a viable document here so that we can move forward. Other than that, I think that's it for me, so we'll go for our second round. And again, that's gonna be five minutes. Doesn't matter to me. Do you have any additional questions? Okay. That would be you.
Thank you. So I do have a question. What, so one of my concerns with, and, and maybe this is how we're supposed to have it because of the way the charter is, right? My understanding is the city manager is the person who is responsible for, quote unquote, disciplining the chief if something arises. But my question is more on the practical lens, from your experience with other jurisdictions. So one of my concerns with allowing the chief to determine discipline when the findings differ from IA or OD is that the culture might obstruct them from seeing how this practice is harmful, right? So we talked about a culture, and sometimes, and I can give you an example. So for example, a lot of the culture in, in policing, right, based on research about the use of force or what, what deems someone suspicious is also culture built into the department through practices and trainings. Sometimes that is really problematic with implicit bias. And my concern is that if the culture has embraced this, right, where even the chief might, I'm not saying this is intentional, but this is the culture sometimes what becomes suspicious. We know that is about poverty, race, how you look and how you behave, right? How, how they've been trained to. Again, this is factual through research, not a opinion. And my, my concern is that when there's different outcomes and the chief, who is also part of this culture, how do we ensure that they can see the difference? Like, how do we also have a mechanism for accountability?
Well, I think that that's where a patterned practice model can, can be beneficial. If we analyze dispositions over, say, a year or two-year timeframe, whatever, and, and look at the decisions that, that the chief made regarding what findings to, to adopt, what discipline to, to impose. The conclusions of that investigation could be, could be that the, the chief's decisions are being influenced by factors such as those that you enumerate.
So that would, in that, in that section, it would allow us to do that as well, to look into that, to the decisions that the chief takes.
Sorry, and what?
So we would be allowed to look into patterns that the chief takes as well.
That's, that's the model that, that I envisioned, yes?
Correct, that's why I'm asking, yes, in this new model. Okay, great. So thank you for clarifying that. And so to clarify earlier about the officer concerns, you know, I never really wanted to make this public, I don't even know what this would put me in a position with, but to satisfy people's concerns, or to clarify at least why I'm concerned. So when I ran for city council and also while being on the commission, now let me be clear that I am not accusing that this is a decision made from an overhead. I'm not accusing this from an officer either, I'm just stating what happened. So there were several occasions where one could think that they were being followed by Santa Ana PD and had tactics. So at least from my experience of living here in Santa Ana my whole life, with the exceptions of when I went to school. You know, if, if you're driving and an, and an officer comes and they're behind you, and then suddenly there's no real sent for emergency, and they put their brake and they start, you know, pressing the gas to get your attention, and they busted you around you, maybe they had to leave somewhere, that can be a concern. But if this is something that's repetitive from your work, and we know that in Ward Four, officers are not often there unless they're really called, right? They, they don't patrol it as much as other occasions. So I've had those encounters, which makes me concerned that I would go into a ride-along. Now, do I think that all officers are, you know, doing this? No, I don't, I'm just saying of my own personal experience. And this is why I'm not opposed to the ride-alongs, I do think that they're informative. My entire dissertation is on ride-alongs, so I do think that it's helpful to learn. But I would like some safetiness. So I'm not concerned about the safety of others from being harmed from the public. I'm born and raised in the hood of Santa Ana, that is not the concern of me. I'm very comfortable going to those spaces. But I would like to at least be included that if we are in a ride-along, that we are given at least protection, legal protections for safety, so that we don't sign our life away. That is my only concern. The other thing that I appreciate Commissioner Lofton Castillo is that, similar to my point about, one of the things is that there's a difference between having, right? So in legal writing, the ordinance sets the roles and powers of the commission as well as the director. The scope can be, you know, further in the bylaws. That's where we say how we practice, how we're gonna make decisions about these. So a lot of these changes can be in the bylaws. I understand that some of them have to be changed to ensure that, you know, we don't have two investigations. Obviously, if that is the law that we cannot have, that we wouldn't be doing that, that would be, you know, clear in the bylaws. That is just, I'm, I'm not opposing this hybrid model that is more clear, but I'm saying that we do have to acknowledge that it takes away some powers that we do have and why they're being removed. And I think that transparency and clarity is helpful to also make sure that the public understands why this is happening. So that's not a question, it's just a comment. And oh, one thing, you mentioned on the presentation that your interpretation of, my understanding is that the changes for the, the one that the ad hoc committee suggested, those to me are not investigatory powers, those are just audits, right? It removes all investigatory powers.
In, in the version of the ordinance that went to the council on July 15th, I believe you're, you're, you're correct. That model, that ordinance envisions a model in which the Police Oversight Commission and the Oversight Director are, are conducting patterned practice investigations, not investigating individual incidents. Now, it did include a, a provision that allows the director and the Oversight Commission to opine on the findings of IA investigations before they go to the chief. So, so potentially, even under the model that went to the council on July 15th, you could still have two competing findings. The difference just being that the Oversight Director wouldn't conduct a complete separate investigation. The Oversight Director would make their separate findings based on the underlying investigation that IA conducted.
Okay, thank you. And then one more thing. Sorry, I have a lot of things here, I'm not reading everything I wrote, so. I, I just want to make sure that I'm clear that I do think eventually we're gonna need more funding for the commission to be productive, right? And even then, we will have to prioritize.
If, if you don't mind, in fairness, everyone else, you've already gone over your time, if you can keep.
Oh, where can I, oh, sorry, I wasn't paying attention.
Closing comments, that would be great.
Okay.
Appreciate it, thank you.
I have a question about the auditor model. So under the auditor model, can we still review individual complaints? Yes, is that?
Yes. So as, as the investigator on behalf of, of the Police Commission, I could review individual complaints and then suing IA investigation. And then I could opine on whether the investigation was thorough, unbiased, fair. I could opine on whether the, the findings were well-founded or not. So, but, so, but, so yes, to answer your question.
Okay, but it has to be limited to after the IA investigation concludes? So you, your input cannot be factored into the decision-making in the first instance, is that, is that right?
Right, so the IA investigator, not, not for OISs, but, but, but for other types of complaints. And, and the commander can, can, can chime in here. I, I think that with, with some IA investigations, the IA investigator makes recommended findings?
No, so the IA investigator just does the fact-finding, all the circumstances and facts. Then they get sent to, to myself, and then I'll make the findings. Recommendations are completed by a deputy chief.
Okay, so, so, so at any rate, after that process is complete, then I could review that investigation, review the underlying facts, review the findings and, and, and recommendations, and make my own.
After it's concluded?
After it's completed, and before it goes to the chief. Before it goes to the chief.
Oh, before it goes to the chief.
So the chief would then be able to see the AI investigation and also the findings based on the audit that was conducted together for, for that?
Under the?
Under the one that was initially proposed.
What, I'm talking about the, the, wait, the, you're talking about the, the July 15th provision? Okay, so you would still be able to make, to basically conduct investigations before the chief makes a decision, is that?
So it wouldn't be a separate, parallel investigation where I interview witnesses?
I understand that. I just mean like you would get the record and then you could, you wouldn't be involved in like the interview process and things like that, but let's just walk through like what would happen. So internal investigation conducts their, or internal affairs conducts their own investigation. They, they interview the police officer, they interview the witnesses, whatever, right? Then they make their recommendation, they've like created a record and everything, and then that record would go to you, and you would review the record, right? Like you wouldn't interview the witnesses, but you'd base, basically it'd be like a closed record. You would review it independently, write your own report, and then issue your own report, and both would go to the chief, is that?
Yes, that, that, that's how it's structured under the July 15th version. Bear in mind, there, there is that, that one-year timeframe from the date that the allegation is discovered by someone with the authority to conduct the investigation. So, so, so as long as, as everything is, is completed within that one-year timeframe, then, then yes.
Okay, so can you expand on the one-year timeframe?
So under POBAR and its government code 3300, et cetera, the, the, there, there's a one-year timeframe, and the clock starts on the date that someone with authority to investigate the allegation become, is made aware of that allegation. So, so an incident may have occurred five years ago, but, but if, say, an IA investigator is not made aware of it until today, that starts the clock. Then that, that one-year clock, within that one-year timeframe, the investigation has to occur, any findings. And if any discipline is to be imposed based on those findings, it has to, it has to be imposed within that one-year timeframe.
Okay, but how does that relate to your powers?
Well, under the model envisioned in the July 15th version, Well, under the model envisioned in the July 15th version, the report from IA, complete with the commander's findings, would need to get to me with sufficient of time, with enough time left for me to review that, get it to the chief, and the chief would then have to make his decision and impose discipline within the one-year timeframe. So if the IA report didn't get to me, got to me and there's only, you know, two weeks left, that, obviously that's not a sufficient.
Okay, I understand, I understand the issue. So, under the auditor model, there could be, okay, so under the auditor model, you have the authority or the power to issue a recommendation to the chief, right, that would be in conjunction with whatever internal affairs recommendation is, but that's only if you have enough time to do so, under POBAR, right, because they have to, police office, the police department discovers some misconduct, they have a year to conduct their investigation and impose any discipline, right? So you could imagine a world where the police department says, oh, well, we're just going to like take our time and, you know, drag this out until like, you know, 11 months or whatever, and then we will issue our report, and that would not give you any time to review, to conduct your own investigation based on like the record that you receive, is that right?
That's feasible, I mean, that's a possible outcome.
Okay, go ahead.
So, but again, under an auditor model, you know, if we conduct an audit of IA investigations and find that they're taking too long and perhaps, you know, purposefully they're being prolonged, maybe that's a finding that we make in a review of a statistically relevant sample of IA investigations.
Right, I understand that. My concern with the auditor model is that it really strips our ability to vindicate individual victims' rights. We can do it at a broad, on a broad level, at a systemic level, but we cannot do it for an individual, it sounds like we might be able to if we have enough time.
Well, I, in any of the models that are presented, the Police Commission does not get the final say.
Well, I understand that, but we can make a recommendation, right, on an individual basis, right, so there are different ways that we could operate, we could look at aggregate data, like for example, how long does it take on average for a POBAR investigation to complete, right, like we could look at that data and say, oh, well, look, it's taking like, or say in like 11 months or almost 12 months, you don't have any time to review and issue your own recommendation, that's a problem, right? We could operate that way. Another way that we could operate is, well, there was a very serious allegation against a police officer, and, you know, should that person be punished or not, should they be disciplined, we could look at that individual case, right? And so I guess what I'm saying is, the auditor model really deprives us of the latter.
With the patterned practice investigation, you're right, the Oversight Commission would not opine on individual incidents in real time, so to speak, so that we make recommendations on findings and recommendations on discipline, for example. Our recommendations would come after the fact, we could look at investigations after the fact and determine that, whatever, 40% of the time, IA investigations were incomplete, they were biased, they were unfair, what, you know, the discipline imposed was inconsistent with officers accused of similar misconduct, et cetera.
Right.
But that would all come after the fact with the goal of changing the system moving forward.
Right, but even then, those recommendations don't have to be accepted, right, it's just a recommendation.
They are recommendations that, as I understand it, would go to the city manager.
Okay, I guess the way that I see this is, you know, I take a very practical view of the whole thing, right, like, okay, what do we have under the current ordinance, what does it allow us to do, what will we be able to do under the new ordinance, like how does that benefit us in any way? The only benefit that I really am hearing with respect to the auditor model is that it's going to focus our, kind of like our attention on specific things. So for example, like, we'll be, you know, we'll be very efficient because we'll be able to like look at aggregate trends or patterns and practices and make recommendations that have a systemic impact, but we can already do that under the current ordinance. And so to me, that doesn't really seem like a benefit, especially when we don't have a history of being inefficient, because we haven't done anything, we haven't had a single complaint that we've reviewed. And so, like, the way that I see it is, why not let us operate under the current ordinance and let us decide for ourselves how we want to operate, and if it turns out that we're super inefficient or we can't come to a consensus about what kind of commission that we want to be, then, you know, okay, let's impose some, you know, what is it, some safeguards, some like guardrails to narrow our scope for specific reviews, and that's all I'll say. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Sayad?
I'll be quick, I appreciate everyone's comments, I think it's practicality, right, so let's say, for example, six complaints come in in a given month, and we're meeting once a month, if we don't have priorities set forth to make the biggest change possible so that we're not getting community members coming in here and saying there's another shooting, which obviously impacts the family because the person's gone, how do we prioritize the six complaints, have Director Morse start investigating the six complaints, and then parallel that to all be completed within a year? IAs are not, are not, like I pick up a report, I do a summary, and then I hand it over, there's a lot of interviews that are conducted, there's a lot of evidence that has to be gathered, so if our power is expanded to investigate every single interview, I think it goes back to my comment where, are we going to give 150% and is that person really going to feel vindicated if we're so busy trying to juggle seven different complaints in a month that we're not going to have the time, effort, or wherewithal to give every single one the decency it deserves? So I think, is this ordinance perfect to me? No, but can it be really good framework for making the biggest change with the restrictions and the parameters that all of us have? I mean, I think, I mean, I know most of us, we have full-time jobs, we're coming in here after our work, I don't know practically speaking how we could conduct investigations for every complaint that comes in, and I don't want something to get 10% of my attention because we're trying to balance six different complaints, 10 different complaints, whatever it may be. And I don't know if Director Morse can speak to that as to why the hybrid model is a good balance in light of trying to investigate so many things at once.
Well, I put forward the hybrid model because there was some interest among some council members in shifting just to a patterned practice model, thus we had the draft that was presented to city council on July 15th. The hybrid model was an attempt to sort of borrow, I think, sort of the best aspects from both frameworks. By focusing on OISs and serious use of force incidents, I think that makes the wisest use of limited time and resources while enabling the Oversight Director and the commission to focus on those patterned practice investigations that I think can help change culture and systems moving forward. I'm not sure if that answers your question, but.
It does, thank you.
Okay.
And then just a last comment, yeah, if we start to notice an IA trend where they're taking 11 and a half months to conclude something, then obviously I'm not going to stay quiet about that, I'm going to make sure that we can get something in time to address an issue because I know IA is very busy, but I think even having this kind of ability to review their investigations even after the fact will make them perform investigations, hopefully dotting every I and crossing every T, so I'm hoping even this itself promotes that cultural change, and with that, I don't have anything else, thank you.
If I can just comment very quickly, there's been some indication that there's concerns of IAs getting to the point where they're reaching the one-year statute of limitations, if you will. From a police department perspective, we're fully prepared to support whatever council decides as it relates to this ordinance and to make it effective, so we have to put in place internal safeguards, you know, staff appropriately so we can ensure these things are getting done in a timely manner, get to Director Morse so he can do his review and give him adequate time to conduct his review, of course, that's something we would discuss with him, every case is different, it may have 20 officer interviews, it may have two, of course, those are going to take different levels of time, body worn camera review, sometimes those are done in real time, that could be hours of body worn camera footage, so with that being said, we're sensitive to that fact, so whatever council decides they want to do to implement, I'm comfortable that the chief is going to put whatever processes in place to make sure that Director Morse gets adequate time to do that.
Commissioner Pereira? Five minutes.
Thank you, Chuck Carpenter, Chuck Carpenter, I would like, I haven't received a copy of the letter that you brought, so I think that if you can send it, if City Staff can send it.
We'll have to discuss that with our city attorney, it wasn't, that's up to them, I just don't know what the policy would be on that, to be quite frank with you.
We can email it right now.
Thank you, appreciate it, and I think that there's also maybe like clarification, because I know Commissioner Mihia has sent, you know, different correspondents that she wanted to, she wanted to be forward to the rest of the commission, so what's the current policy on that, like once the commissioner sends something to the city manager's office or the Director Morse, and then we can receive it, or, you know, I'm just trying to get clarity on that.
I think at this current time, because the bylaws haven't been adopted, we're still working through many of the items that were addressed and were agreed upon, the list of items that the commission would work through, the bylaws that were discussed and that were proposed do set forth a procedure by which we can get those memos circulated and get potential items on calendar until those bylaws get addressed, and I would defer to the city manager's office too, I believe we're still working through what was previously discussed, and you know, UVs has obviously been a big topic, this is a big topic as well, so I think we're trying to be judicious with time.
Thank you, thank you, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, what was it, what the process will look like moving forward to ensure that commissioner correspondences that are sent, you know, get forward. Director Morse, the hybrid model that you're presenting, you know, I think that that is very conscious of the current resources that we have available at the commission, and particularly within the powers of being able to, you know, conduct investigations resulting and, you know, use of force, shooting resulting in death or serious injury, one of the things that I also wanted to make sure that is added to that is of the types of investigations that we can conduct and the types of complaints are threats to bodily harm, if an officer threatens a resident with bodily harm, that those are also complaints that, you know, the commission should consider whether or not to, you know, direct to conduct an investigation, as well complaints of sexual harassment, I think that those also rise to the level of seriousness that this commission should have. And I also wanted to clarify is that even when we receive the complaints or even the investigations, we still have to deliver as a commission and come to an agreement as a majority on which of those complaints we're going to move forward with investigation, so it's not like automatically, is that correct, Director Morse?
Ask that question again, please, Commissioner.
Yeah, so it's not like when we receive the complaints or we look, you know, it's not automatically we conduct investigation in each of us, as a commission, we still have to deliver on which ones are the ones that as a commission find merit, is that correct?
Under the current ordinance, so the commission can direct the director to investigate certain complaints in certain categories?
Right, and, but it's not like it's automatic, right?
Yeah, I'll jump in here, that would constitute direction to staff and it would require a majority vote by the commission to direct Director Morse to investigate certain complaints. So to the commissioner's point, it's not as though every single complaint that came in would be automatically investigated.
Thank you, Assistant Attorney Martinez, and that would, I'm guessing, apply to the, to a hybrid model, correct?
Well, under the hybrid model that I envisioned, a possible framework would entail an automatic response by the police director regarding any OIS, so for example, if an OIS occurs, I would not wait for direction from the commission to respond and investigate it, I would just respond and investigate it, so I'm not investigating the complaint so much as the incident, it's an automated response.
Thank you for the clarification, and I just last closing comments is, I really hope that, you know, I think from what I'm hearing from my colleagues of the commission, knows largely want to retain, you know, our investigatory power, and I think whether it's a hybrid model, you know, I think that I'm supportive of that, again, with some of the changes that I mentioned that I see, but I really hope that the city council does consider, you know, the commission's wishes once this gets reported out to the council on Tuesday, but those are all.
Okay, so I have a point of clarification, and I may have heard wrong, but it sounded like a commissioner earlier alluded that it was the mayor and city council, or certain city council members were the ones that brought up concerns regarding the ordinances. For the record, who was the one that brought up the ordinance changes? Was it the mayor?
So not initially, I know that this ordinance, I started working with your group in January, we've been doing some review to see how we can implement and get things moving, and at that time, while I was doing some of the research, we did start talking to the city attorney in regards to the current ordinance, and she had shared with me about how when this ordinance was pushed through, she initially had concerns with it, so there was initial concerns that she had that she did mention when this went through city council, and at that time, our city manager's office and our police department weren't involved in the drafting of the ordinance to depth, or that's what I was, what I was told, right? So in looking at this and in wanting to have a functioning ordinance that didn't conflict with city charter, we had the opportunity to go back in and look at it, and that would have been with the city attorney's office, the city manager's office, and the police department working together collaboratively to see what model may function better, and yes, it was the mayor who created the ad hoc to then review this.
Now, wasn't it staff who asked the mayor to create the ad hoc? From my recollection from the city council meeting, that's what the city attorney said?
Yes.
Okay, I think it's important that we have accurate information for the public. One thing that I wanted to also bring up from the July 15 meeting, and I believe the context was what could happen if the ordinance wasn't amended with all the changes, there was a discussion between council member Fand and, council member Fand and I believe it was Assistant City Attorney in regards to conducting proper investigation. in regards to conducting proper investigation. And it was mentioned that if we were, let's say that we kept the ordinance as is and we investigated a police officer, we found that police officer to be 100% in the wrong, without a doubt. But the fact that we conducted the investigation in the improper way, we now have, let's say we get sued, we would get sued, we will lose money, and that police officer would also get his job back. Is that correct?
There's a possibility of that in terms of a reversal of the adverse employment action, the discipline that was imposed.
And that's why we have the changes to the ordinance to better protect us from getting into that?
There are multiple reasons why staff proposed amendments to the ordinance as outlined in the staff report, but certainly the potential for litigation and continued and protracted litigation of the ordinance and/or the impact of the ordinance on specific officers could go on for years.
Thank you. That's all I had.
Thank you. Okay. Well, again, my concern is, as a commission, how much input we're really going to have on this ordinance? We've all met with our respective council people and city staff. I don't know if we'll ever see a version of that ordinance before it goes to the council. Can somebody answer that question for me? Yeah, but we see it before it goes to council.
Could you repeat that question?
My concern is if we'll see a version of the ordinance, because this is clearly not the final draft, if my understanding is what's taking place tonight. All of us commissioners have had interaction with the city and our respective council person requesting things that we thought should be implemented. Will we see a draft of that ordinance before it goes to the council? Or is it just going to go to the council? My point being is...
That would be up to the city council and what they decide or what they recommend during our work-study session on Tuesday.
So my point is, we'll never know if our changes were implemented or even presented. Is that correct or accurate?
Well, at the moment, we're just taking the feedback. Right, so at the moment, we're just taking the feedback. It's a work-study session for you to discuss, to determine what model you would like to see implemented, to see what recommendations you have that we can take to city council on Tuesday. Tuesday is city council meeting. They will, we will review your recommendations with city council and they will also have a discussion. They will make certain recommendations and that is where we will get direction on the changes that they'd like to see implemented.
Okay.
I think it's important to note too that procedurally, whatever city council decides, whatever changes are made, would then go to another city council meeting for a first reading, whether it's approved or not, and then there would be yet another city council meeting for a second reading. So there is opportunity along the way for public comment and it's not set in stone. There are still, there are still these check marks along the way that need to be followed. It's not as though the ordinance just becomes implemented overnight.
No, I fully appreciate that, but I just think for the sake of the public's understanding, it really rests with the council. They can take or disregard any suggestions we've made, any comments we've made, anything we've made. So I think that needs to be clear.
Yes, that is correct.
We've all expressed opinions up here and they may not, they may or may not be reflected in the final ordinance. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, just to be clear for the public's sake, it's not with us, it's with the council.
Correct.
And that's true for every commission, planning commission. They can give recommendations, but ultimately it's always up to the city council.
That's correct.
And to that point, and to Castillo Lawton's point, we can make all the recommendations we want based on your report and that can be disregarded in polite terms. As far as discipline goes with the police is what I'm talking about. I apologize for that.
That, and I'll jump in. That is the way that your city charter is written.
No, I appreciate that. I just wanted to make, get clarity on that, so.
Correct.
As I've expressed in the past, I don't want to see us become a paper tiger. And I think other commissioners have had the same concern. So I don't know how we get around that or if we can get around that or if that's even an issue.
I do think that ultimately it is the city council that decides on what this body is going to look at, going to review, and what they're going to recommend. The city council does have ultimate say in the ordinance itself, but that ordinance is going to give you the authority to do certain things for oversight. And while discipline might be one that you won't decide on specific discipline for an officer, that doesn't mean that you can't go through some of these assessments to determine what kind of policies and procedures would be able to be implemented here, that those could be shared with the city manager. The city manager can then decide if those can be implemented. And that, again, if you do find that some of those recommendations or none of those recommendations were ever implemented, that's definitely something that you can also write a report on that could be published, could be posted online, could be shared with city council so that they're aware of it. So while, again, it's not a body that's going to impose the discipline per se or decide on the ordinance per se, it's still really effective because we are counting on this body to review policies, procedures, practices to ensure that our police department is doing what it should be doing.
I appreciate that and I understand the discipline part fully. I fully appreciate that. And again, my driver here is to get the root cause of the problems and that would be policies, procedure, training and all those issues. So again, I just want to, for the public's sake, we don't have the final say on the ordinance. We don't have a final say on a lot of things. We're going to try to do the best we can with what we're given. And that's all I have to say.
Can I, can I say a couple of things?
No, just kidding.
I just wanted to make a couple of points.
Well, let me, we can, at the end, if you'll hold it all so we can, we can move along with our little agenda here. All right. I think we've had our five and 10-minute discussions with everyone. And my question is, Mr. City Attorney, have you captured the commission's direction?
As always, Chair.
You're the wily beast. Okay, wait, I'll give you a chance. Is it something you really got to say? Go for it.
So the purpose of this meeting was to share our thoughts about what we think about the ordinance, the proposed ordinance. And so I think the most direct way to do that would be to have like a ceremonial vote or something like that approving or rejecting the ordinance as it's currently written. I think that would send the strongest message to city council about how we feel about the current ordinance. It would be, it would be the
The original one?
The original one that was presented before July 15, or on July 15.
Before July 15?
The ad hoc one.
The ad hoc, the ad hoc.
Do you want to vote on it? Okay.
The ad hoc, not the oversight director's version. This would be the version that the city, the ad hoc committee has proposed to the city council. I think it would be useful for this body to issue or to have a vote to reflect how we feel about the ad hoc recommendation as it's currently written.
Vice Chair, I certainly appreciate the, your comment. This was a study session. It's not a business item and unfortunately, we can't conduct a vote on a non-business item. So this was an opportunity for all of us to get together, to comment on things. City manager's office, Director Morse is taking it into consideration and moving the ball forward. But it's just, it's a Brown Act issue and we just, there's no voting on this because it's not a business item.
But we could say in our closing comments which one we preferred.
Let's hold that for our closing comments. All right, Deputy City Manager, do you have any closing comments before we all give you our piece of mind?
No, thank you.
Okay, there you go. All right, we're going to go down the list here, folks, for your closing comments. Mr. Goransky.
Well, as I was listening to everybody here, very interesting, I'm finding out that we all, we all, just about all of us think alike. And I had some questions I was going to add to Commissioner Castillo Lawton. I wrote that down so I could say it both. And I too was wondering, you know, it goes through all these channels before it gets to us. And then if they don't like, you know, what we decided on or what we corrected from them, why are we here? Why were we selected? Why do you bother? Why do we bother with us? Just my thoughts, my questions. I'm glad, like I say, I'm glad to see everybody agrees here, just about. I also thank for the evening. I think it was very interesting and it sounds like we're getting a little bit closer to what we're actually supposed to be doing here, like that. So thank you for that. Now, I have a favor, a question that I've asked the city to do for me or for us, okay? Is that initials that are being used for all these documentations, do you have a list or could you make us a list? Send it to us on the computer. What is AO? What is AB? What's CD? What's, you know, what they stand for? When I start reading things, even in here, or in the ordinance, you know, I'm thinking, it's ridiculous to be going back in each paragraph. Now, what was that again? If I had to look at it right here, I'll learn them, you know, real quick. They're very annoying at times, just like tonight I had to ask what the one was. I was also reading this afternoon about MOU. I couldn't think, what was it? Method of something, isn't it? I forget, MOU, what does that stand for? Okay, it sounds familiar. So would that be possible, please? If we could have a list from, all these initials that are being used all the time? Do we have a list sent to us or given to us next month?
Acronyms, we can find a list of acronyms to share with you.
Okay, would you please? I should appreciate it. Okay. I think that's just about it. Thank you for everything again. Like I say, I'm glad to see that really we're just about all 99.9% agreeing with each other and we're all on the same wavelength. Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Commissioner Mejia? We can, we can come back to if you like. Okay.
I'm sorry, Commissioner, your question is, can, can your email address be published?
Oh, sorry. Thank you. I feel comfortable sharing my personal email, but I don't feel comfortable sharing others. So what do you suggest we do for that?
Oh, that's not a legal issue, absolutely.
Oh, I can share?
You're saying, can I share my email address with other people?
No, I know that. I do do that.
Others, you've got other commissioners' email addresses?
That's what I'm being asked because sometimes a community wants to send a message to all of us and they don't have the access to individuals' emails because it's not on a public website. To my understanding, I haven't found it, right?
Is it, is it not? I think it's...
Our contact emails are online? They're not.
We can review.
Yeah, let's...
We'll just do a quick review and if it's something that we can do, I don't see an issue with it.
Yeah, because you all have official email addresses, I believe, with the city, so.
Oh, we do? No.
No, commissions do not.
Oh, they do not?
No, only...
So yeah, that's exactly what I'm saying, that maybe it's time we all create a different one, right? So it's not associated to our personal ones that we use, but that that email, even if it's a Gmail account, you know, associated to us, the public has access to it. So when they have comments or concerns and they want to contact us, they know where to look at. And they're not sending, you know, I don't check my social media for the, I have a separate account for my personal one. I'm not checking that all the time. Sometimes I miss things and I also want to be respectful and not share other commissioners' emails.
Yeah, the, having, having email addresses set up with the city or email addresses that are separate from your personal is not a legal issue. And if the city manager's office wants to create or facilitate that, we can set that up, right Sylvia?
Yes, we'll review.
Thank you. Okay, so that's one out of the way. Be patient. The other question I, or comment I have is my understanding, and obviously I understand that we don't have approved bylaws, so maybe this doesn't apply as of yet, but last, at our last meeting, Commissioner Said brought up if we can start investigating or looking into the case with Noé Rodríguez, given that as of now, we can function under the current, right, ordinance? We haven't, they haven't adopted a new one, so we're still under this current ordinance. So I would like to know what suggestions you may have. This is something we brought up again and guidance would be helpful. And then the other thing, okay, so comments on the, the last comments that I was suggested to say during my, my comments where I definitely do not support taking money from parks and wrecks. There's, a lot of folks here live in multi-generational households. A lot of folks live in apartments where they don't have space. Parks and wrecks are so essential for that. So taking away money from the very much thing that research shows helps reduce also crime, which is what, you know, folks want to do, is not. Now, if we want to take money away from maybe the dog park, that doesn't really benefit everyone, I can support that. But they shouldn't come from, like, I just don't want that idea to be thrown out there. Or maybe even from the PD department itself, like, I know that other places have percentages. A 1% can go a long way, even 0.5% from your budget can go a long way, you know? We can think of other things instead of restricting our community of the very limited resources they barely have. I know we talked a lot about efficiency, but you know, we know that when there's issues arising or discrimination arising, efficiency doesn't resolve that. You don't fix that by being quick. That takes time, unfortunately. Now, I'm not saying that we should take years to address a case, but efficiency doesn't resolve issues of disparities. I've never seen that. There's also one thing, and I know you cannot answer this right now, but a comment to think about is, you know, there's been allegations about IA removing some of the camera footage. So what are the mechanisms in place to ensure that we can detect that or the director can detect that? If we are going to be going into this hybrid model, how do we ensure that, that the community can trust IA, right? So we're trying to bridge that. How do we do that? If that's the direction we're going, we also need mechanisms in place to do that. And then ideally, of course, I would prefer not to strip away our investigatory powers. I still think that we do need to remain our investigatory powers, especially when it comes to anything of excessive use of force or anything that has to do with results of death or bodily injuries. So if the amendments must be made, I do prefer Director Morse's versions with the exceptions of my comments that I made earlier and suggestions. But I also agree with Commissioner Lawton Castillo that there is, the only reason why we're doing this is to narrow the scope and this really strips away our powers, so we need to be clear about that. This, the amendments do take away our powers and it narrows and I understand for budgetary or constraints, but it is taking away our powers, like, that is just a fact. And then I want to have one more, clarify one point that, you know, we've had several comments today, so I'm not even trying to ask the attorneys to clarify in this. I think that's very clear. But when this was brought up or the amendments, right, there's been a lot of conversations about ensuring that we're with, we're aligned with state mandates, that we're ensuring that we're making sure that we don't violate Pobhar. But the ordinance itself, the way it's written, is not violating. Now, a practice, right, if we were as a commission to direct, to do another interview, then yes, there are guidelines, but obviously this is why we have you as an attorney, right, to give us guidance. This is not going to be impulsive decisions that we're taking. These are going to be discussions that we're taking. So they're not really necessary to make the ordinance amendments. Those can be practical, also included in the bylaws. A lot of commissions determine and create checklist of what can we do, what should we prioritize? That again, can be in the bylaws. Now again, I do like the hybrid version with my suggestions, but I'm just trying to have, if we're going to make claims, we should be factual. We shouldn't, we should not be confusing the public as it is. Now, in terms of the potential lawsuits, there's, there's a, there's a difference between a potential lawsuit being because we violate something. So in, in the event that we... haven't even looked at a case, right? So, this is all hypothetical. In the event that we completely miss the city attorney's direction to not have a double, you know, dual investigation, and we're not complying with POBAR, of course, that would lead to an investigate, to a lawsuit. But why would any of us here do that? I don't think anybody here is irrational or impulsive to make those decisions. So, those, those type of comparisons are, quite honestly, not really productive for the conversation. Now, what can happen, and which, you know, since we want to be, let's, let's actually state what was said at the July meeting. Mayor Mesquah mentioned that the reasons why, one reason why potential lawsuits can happen from police association is because maybe there's an advocate, commissioner, that can be biased, and that can result in a lawsuit. We, the city of Santa Ana has spent $24 million in the, from 2010 to 2020, not even including the last five years, on lawsuits against the Santa Ana PD Department. So, if we want to talk about lawsuits, we also want to make sure that we're accounting for that. Now, families can also state the same thing, that that some commissioners here are constantly posting on social media about ensuring the safety, you know, of others, and how, how much crime and all these things are happening, neglecting the family. So, they can go both ways. So, let's be factual, and let's not start spreading some rumors.
Thank you. Commissioner Pereira, closing comments?
Thank you. Yeah, thank you, Chair Carpenter. First, I want to start with, I'm really glad we had this in-depth discussion today regarding the, the ordinance and the proposed changes. I am very supportive of a hybrid model with the comments of my concerns and additions that I mentioned during my remarks earlier. And ultimately, I do want the commission to retain its investigatory power and ability, yes, of course, to be able to issue policy and reforms, but I, I believe that it's also important for us to retain our ability to respond to specific situations, and so we can maintain the trust of the public. I also want to echo the, the same sentiments as Commissioner Mejia regarding beginning an investigation for the case of Noe Rodriguez. I believe we have, you know, we have received public comments regarding the case for a couple of commission meetings now, and I think that we, we have a director now, so let's, let's, let's get ongoing on that, to be able to bring, you know, some questions, some answers to the questions that the public has, as well to the family. Additionally, I have spoken to Director Morse regarding this, but I will be agendizing at the upcoming commission meeting on October, a request for the commission to consider a public hearing regarding the use of military equipment by SAPD during the marches and demonstrations that took place in June. I think that there has been concerns, and, and, and interest for the public, for the commission to look into this. So, I'll, I'll be agendizing that. I'm working with Director Morse to do so. Finally, I want to close with, you know, we had recently a ruling by the Supreme Court, which essentially has given a green light for racially profiling people that look like me, and some of us in the commission Latinos, by ICE. And I think that that's something that we should all be concerned about, the impact of that ruling, not only that, that it will have on ICE enforcement activities, but in general, on policing as a whole. So, I, I am hoping we have some discussion regarding racial profiling in the commission, and, more deeply in the, in the near future. But those are my closing comments. Thank you, Chair Carpenter.
Thank you. Commissioner Said.
I want to thank staff and Director Morse for all of their work and meeting with us. I want to thank our public speakers today, and their commitment to bringing points to the commission. And I want to thank all of you for your discussion, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Vega.
Thank you, and I just want to say thank you to staff once again for all the hard work you do. For the record, the whole parks and wreck was just an example. There's an extensive process when it comes to the budget, and it's ultimately the public, not us. Whether we want to get rid of a dog park, city events, or defund the police, it'll be up to them, not us. The comments that I made earlier are not my opinion. This was from the July 15 meeting between two legal experts, and I trust their words more than others. So, in closing, I would just say that I, my preference would be the patterned practice investigation. But ultimately, you know, whatever model comes before us, I have no doubt that all of us are going to do our very best to, to, to bring transparency and accountability to the police department. So, I'm ready to work. It depends, no matter what model comes before us. Nobody up here wants to protect bad cops. We all live in the city, and bad cops makes, they make us unsafe. They erode trust between them and the public, so nobody up here wants that. And, and I look forward, and yes, I will echo, we should start investigating, or start looking at cases right now. We shouldn't have to wait for the city council to get this ordinance, first reading, second reading, throw it back to us. We should start working now. And those are my comments.
Thank you. Vice Chair, Castillo-Lauten.
Yes, I just want to thank everybody for the productive dialogue today. I want to thank the Oversight Director for the presentation, and for putting together that very detailed red line for the hybrid model. Thank you so much. I will just say that I obviously disagree with the, with the ordinance that the, the ad hoc committee has, has proposed. I just don't see why we would limit our power when there doesn't really seem to be a reason to do so. We haven't, we haven't operated under the existing ordinance. It doesn't seem like, you know, there are any existing concerns at, at the moment. So, I, I would be opposed to, to changing the ordinance. I am in favor of the hybrid model if we have to. If we have to change the ordinance, I would be more in favor of the hybrid model. And I am also interested in Noe Rodriguez. I am curious, Jonathan, can we make a motion? Like, the order, we can operate under the existing ordinance, right? Like, it's operative. And so, my question is, can we direct the Oversight Director to investigate what has, what, what happened with Noe Rodriguez, and present findings to us?
The, the current, current ordinance is in effect, and it's operational with regard to Mr. Rodriguez's case, and I would, I would like Tamara to opine as well. But my understanding is that the specific facts of that case have now necessarily involved the Attorney General's office. And so, our investigation is told, or stayed, until the Attorney General has concluded their investigation. That's by way of our own policies. Tamara, is that accurate?
That's correct.
So, you asked two questions there. Yes, the ordinance is operational. There's, there's nothing making it ineffective. With regard to Mr. Rodriguez's case, we are, by operation of our own policies and procedures, unable to investigate that until the Attorney General's investigation is concluded.
Do you have a sense of how long Attorney General investigations last, on average?
I will defer to Commander Lopez, but they take a while.
Just from looking at some of the cases, I'm going to say on average, about a year and a half to two years.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, final comments. Again, I'm not in favor of the evisceration of the original ordinance. I think I've made that clear again in the letter I wrote to everyone. I just hope that we can come to some kind of consensus to get some ordinance here that we can work with. That's my only wish. It's, it's not going to make everybody happy, but I just think we got to stop beating the dead horse and move forward. And again, if we're forced into a model, a hybrid model, I think works the best. And again, in my opinion, finding the root cause of any incident is what's going to bring about change. It's going to bring out clarity, and hopefully, some better public perception. So, that's it for me. Okay. And with that, the next Police Oversight Commission meeting is scheduled for Thursday, October 9th, 2025, in the Council Chamber at 5:00 PM. I hereby adjourn the meeting at 8:02 PM. All right.